Good evening. Welcome to the Charter Township Van Buren Planning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, December 10th, 2025. This time I'm calling the meeting to order. Could we all rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Bud. Bernie Grant.
Here.
Bill is excused. Medina Atchinson is excused. Jackson Paul.
Here.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Brian Cullen.
At this time, we have an agenda before us. Do I have any action concerning the agenda?
Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion in support to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have with for us is the minutes from the regular meeting of November 12th, 2025. Do I have any action concerning the minutes?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Do we have any corrections, deletions, comments concerning the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up is correspondence and announcements. Per conversation during the joint meeting, we like to announce the planning commission meetings of both the City of Belleville and Sumter Township. City of Belleville is having their planning commission meeting tomorrow night, December 11th, 2025, and the next one on January 1st, or excuse me, January 8th of 2026. Sumter Township will have theirs on January 8th of 2026, then the next one on February 12th of 2026. And all are encouraged or available to attend. Do we have any other correspondence?
Through the chair, we do not have any correspondence or announcements.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we open the floor for general comment from the public on any item not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone would like to bring up an item or have a conversation prior to us moving into the agenda? Seeing none, moving ahead. We have a public hearing this evening. And that is item number one, case 25-037, Crossroads Distribution Center North 6 LLC, Conditional Rezoning Agreement Amendment. A request by Crossroads Distribution Center North 6 LLC to amend the conditional rezoning agreement associated with the previously approved request, case 22-033, which resulted in rezoning of a parcel described as parcel ID number 83008990002706, otherwise known as the Ashley Crossroads North Building 6, site located at 42060 E Course Road, from MT Industrial Transportation to M2 General Industrial with conditions. Location of the parcel is on the west side of Hagerty Road, on the north side of E Course Road. This time, I would like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion in support to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, at this time, anyone from the public that would like to make a comment concerning it? Anyone from the public? Anyone? Then I would entertain a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion in support to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving ahead. Old Business. Chahal Trucking amended site plan approval. A request by applicant Davenport Brothers Construction on behalf of owner, apologize for the pronunciation, seductive of seeing for to amend the approved site plan for a repair facility. The site is located at 6100 Schooner Drive. First up, presentation by staff. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. So my letter dated December 3rd, 2025. Chahal Trucking was granted preliminary site plan approval and special land use approval in August, September of 2022, and final site plan approval in February of 2023. Despite receiving final site plan approval in February 2023, Wayne County final approval was not granted until March of 2024. Construction of the facility began in 2024 and was recently completed. As a part of final closeout process, the township recently completed our final inspections of the site, including our planning site inspection. At the November 12th Planning Commission, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, the site plan amendment discussion was postponed to allow additional time to gather pertinent information in comparing the original October 13th, 2022 landscape plan with the revised June 15th, 2023. We calculated a difference of 24 less trees with 18 additional bushes and shrubs. At this time, we are not aware of an alternative location on the site that can foreseeably accommodate 24 trees without encroaching past the pond buffers, which are required by Wayne County. We are satisfied with the proposed shrubs and bushes. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. The applicant is, do we have the applicant here?
This is seeing, Mr. Chairman, does not appear that the applicant is here this evening.
Moving ahead then, planning commissioners, discussion on the topic.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jar.
The meeting minutes show that the item was tabled until such time as staff can work with the applicant to determine the required number of trees for the site and determine if the redesigned detention ponds passed Van Buren Township engineering standards. Do we have a comment on whether or not they pass the engineering standards?
Were they, I don't know if they were, that updated plans were passed along to us?
I would have to double check on the engineering standards. I apologize. I was not at that meeting and I did not read the minutes as I should have after they were distributed to get the full documentation to you this evening.
Chairman, I understand that the landscape plan is acceptable. I think that's, I think we had, we had pretty much come to that determination that the, there wasn't much to do on the landscape plan. There was a question about whether, I mean, we can go back in the minutes and check it, but I thought we were going to ask whether or not there was something that should be done with the tree fund or to make up with the shortfall. I understand there's nowhere to put the, the trees, but if there was a required amount.
The, the way our, the way our zoning ordinance is set up, we do allow payments into the tree fund in lieu of replacement trees for removal. On this site, because it's part of an industrial park and it was predeveloped, I don't believe there were any tree removals required for it, which we would be allowed to place in the tree fund. I believe all of the, the deviation in the trees is from some of the required landscaping calculations, including the frontage landscaping, so based on that, I don't think it's a, that's, that's something we can do.
Staff's assessment of the tree situation is spot on. I'm concerned about the redesigned detention ponds and whether or not they pass Van Buren Township engineering standards. That was the tabling condition?
So, so I, I can tell you with the, with the engineering review that the, these, the civil plans as they went in did go through engineering review. I know we did have site inspectors and construction inspectors on the site while the ponds were under construction. So we did have an approved set of plans. I know it was something that we, that Fishbeck would have reviewed and approved. And certainly, we can get that verification very easily, so I'll make sure we do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I trust my staff. As long as staff is willing to report back to the commission that the ponds did in fact pass engineering standards. Once you've verified it, then I'm, I'm actually okay with, with that as an answer. The trees were kind of the bigger concern. I believe we were all feeling pretty, pretty good at the time about engineering and the ponds having been this main sticking point on the site, that it was actually correct. Just wanted verification.
Was there a modification of the, because we, we went through final site plan, engineering, preconstruction and inspection in 24, and then with them finishing up in 25, was there modifications after those processes were completed?
Oh, so the, the plans were updated after they obtained final site plan approval. I believe it was 23, don't, I apologize, I probably got the date wrong, with 2023. They did go through revisions at the Wayne County Permit Office for Engineering Review and, and you guys did review. The main change that, that's being considered tonight is with regards to landscaping, because the detention ponds were pushed to the front of the site. And because you have, because the county requires that 25-foot buffer where you're not allowed to do disposals, a lot of the frontage landscaping was in that 25-foot buffer once the ponds were extended further towards the site. So it changed some of our zoning requirement, well, not requirements, but it, it impacted our zoning requirements.
Gotcha. My apologies. Yeah, we did full engineering review. I know last year through 23, 24, went through all, made sure they had their permits and all that. If there was modifications dirt recently, then that's what I was referring to. I'm not, okay. My apologies.
Through the chair. Just to clarify, should they, you know, staff come back with any changes that need to be made to the detention ponds? Is that something that the board would be able to correct?
Yes.
Through the chair. I just found the preconstruction for Chahal Trucking, and it says that the date of approved set of plans is dated April 2024. So that would have been after the approved set of plans through Wayne County. But I can pull up the plan still and confirm them, but I did just find that while we wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Anyone from the public have any comments concerning this item? Anyone from the public? Yes. Please, to the microphone, introduce yourself for us, please.
Hi, my name is Monique Kirkowski, and I'm just seeking general information, if that's possible. I'm, I'm seeing that the request is to change the zoning from industrial transportation to general industrial.
Just on this item right now, that we're talking about Chahal Trucking, you're bringing up, I believe, an item concerning Ashley Crossroads.
So am I reading the right thing here? That it's general industrial condition?
We're on item number, old business. We haven't moved into new business yet, but you're fine.
I guess my question is, because I'm newly alerted to concerns over general industrial?
Can we bring that up on the next item for it, please? Thank you. Anyone from the public concerning this item?
Case 2212, Chahal Trucking.
Chahal Trucking. Seeing none, commissioners, do you have any desire on this item?
Mr. Chair, the original request was for an amended site plan approval, am I right? Are we discussing, or would you entertain a motion at this time?
We discussed.
We're discussing, or we?
We're moving on to motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, unless Mr. Grant would?
No, I was gonna say, I think I would agree with you that we trust our staff for their review and their reporting back as a basis of their approval.
Yeah, great. Well, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I, I would be in favor of making a motion to grant the applicant, Chahal Trucking, the amended site plan approval at the site located at 6100 Schooner Drive, based on the analysis subject to the conditions detailed in the information presented in the November 12th meeting and the additional information presented by staff this evening, with the condition that staff verify that the redesigned detention ponds have indeed passed Van Buren Township engineering standards.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jar, supported by Commissioner Grant. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Bernie Grant.
Yes.
Sherri Bud.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Brian Cullen.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving ahead to new business. We have item number one. Case 25-037, Crossroads Distribution Center North 6 LLC, Conditional Rezoning Agreement Amendment. A request by Crossroads Distribution Center North 6 LLC to amend the conditional rezoning agreement associated with the previously approved request, case 22-033, which resulted in the rezoning of the parcel described as parcel ID otherwise known as Ashley Crossroads North Building 6, site located at 42060 E Course Road, from MT Industrial Transportation to M2 General Industrial with conditions. The parcel is located on the west side of Hagerty Road, on the north side of E Course Road. First, presentation from township staff. Williams.
Thank you. I will defer to our planning consultant, Vidya Krishnan.
Thanks, Brittany. Good evening, members of the commission. I summarize the request before you tonight. Tonight is to amend an existing conditional rezoning agreement. For the benefit of the public, I would like to clarify the difference between a straight rezoning and a conditional rezoning. When a request for rezoning is done, it is to change the zoning on a subject property to a different zoning designation. When such a rezoning is done, as a traditional rezoning, whatever uses are permitted in the district to which they are rezoned, all of those uses would be permitted. But a conditional rezoning is a very different tool than a straight rezoning. In a conditional rezoning, the zoning designation of a property is changed from one to another designation, but it is strictly tied to the conditions that were placed in an agreement that is executed between the township and between the developer. Those conditions strictly limit what uses can go into the site. So as long as all of the terms and conditions of that agreement are met, the property retains the rezoning to which it was done. If it defaults from any of those, the property revets back to its original zoning. So conditional rezoning is not the same as a traditional rezoning. It is a rezoning that is strictly bound with an agreement on it. And the key part about a conditional rezoning is, the conditions that are offered for such a rezoning have to be developer initiated. The township cannot demand conditions. The developer proposes voluntary conditions and restrictions, and the township can choose either to accept or reject them. In this case, this specific conditional rezoning for this property took place originally in November 2022. In November 2022, the applicant received approval for and executed a conditional rezoning agreement to conditionally rezone the parcel from its then classification, which was MT Industrial Transportation, to M2, which is general industrial. The rezoning at the time was done in order to allow for the building to be used for manufacturing strictly of lithium ion batteries only. The MT district does not permit any automotive-based manufacturing uses, while the M2 district does allow manufacturing industries that involve automotive components. Per the terms of the conditional rezoning agreement that was executed and recorded at the time, the conditions that were voluntarily placed on the parcel, the assembly and manufacture of automobiles or automobile bodies is not permitted. Breweries, bump shops, metal buffing, plastering, polishing, lumber shops, all of the heavy industrial uses that are typically permitted in the M2 were not permitted. They were prohibited. Trucks and railroad terminals, which are permitted in the M2, were not permitted. They were prohibited. All M2 districts' special land uses that are listed in the zoning ordinance are not permitted. The only M2 use that was permitted was specifically manufacturing of lithium ion batteries and also M1 light industrial use, which is automatically permitted in an M2 district. Light industrial uses are the least intensive of all industrial uses in the zoning classification. The conditional rezoning was specifically done to accommodate a lithium ion battery manufacturer. Unfortunately, that business was unable to expand into the whole building. The size of the building is significant. It is 658,989 square feet. It's commonly referred to as Building 6 in Ashley Crossroads North. Now, the business initially started off by occupying Phase 1, which was one-fifth of the building, a very small portion of the building. They were supposed to go through site plan approval for the remaining portion of the building, for which they would have had to come back before the planning commission. However, the business was unable to expand and limited its operations entirely to the one-fifth portion of the building only. The remaining portion of the building has continued to remain vacant and remains vacant to this day. At this time, the applicant is requesting, the owner of the property is requesting the ability to amend the existing conditional rezoning agreement in order to allow the industrial MT uses that the property was originally zoned and that it was designed for. They're not asking to add any additional manufacturing uses. They are merely asking for the ability to be able to use the building for what it originally was designed, constructed and approved for. They're merely asking for the ability to be able to use the building for what it originally was designed, constructed, and approved for. Now, per our zoning ordinance, a conditional rezoning agreement can be amended, provided it follows the exact same process as the original conditional rezoning, which is why we have a public hearing tonight. And the planning commission gets to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, which is the final approving body. There are certain standards in the zoning ordinance based upon which we typically review a conditional rezoning. In brief, it summarizes all of the existing conditions. Now, this site alone is zoned M2 general industrial. The property to the north and to the south are both MT industrial transportation. It is sandwiched between MT on both sides. The property to the west is the ITC's corridor, which is zoned single-family residential. It can never be built upon, but that is our zoning in the zoning ordinance, which we retain. To the east, most of the properties, except for an isolated couple of properties, are zoned M1 light industrial. A few isolated parcels are R1B, single-family residential. With regard to the future land use plan map, the designation for this property in our master plan is industrial trucking. It is industrial trucking to the south. To the east and to the north, it is light industrial. And the ITC corridor to the west continues to remain single-family residential even in the master plan. Now, some of the standards based upon which we would review a request for conditional rezoning are would the proposed rezoning further the goals and objectives of the master plan? Now, when in 2022, this property was conditionally rezoned, it was specifically to allow for one manufacturing use only. None of the other M2 manufacturing uses, which are considered heavy industrial, none of those were permitted per the terms of the agreement. Now, per the master plan, the site is designed, still designed, to be industrial trucking. And the industrial trucking is designed for industrial developments with significant transportation and/or logistics components. So if you're familiar with the site, the site currently has Crossroads Building 2. It's got Buildings 4, 5. Building 6 is the one that is under consideration at this time. Crossroads North is up there on Van Bond, and the applicant also has approval for Crossroads Buildings 8 and 9. So the rezoning conditions shall not authorize uses or developments not permitted in the district proposed by the rezoning. Now, this is where we come to a clarification. Whether the question arises whether the applicant's request for conditional rezoning amendment is allowing for industrial transportation uses in the M2 district. That is not what this is. When a property is conditionally rezoned, the underlying zoning no longer ceases to exist. This property's current zoning designation is M2 with conditional rezoning. It is not just M2, it is M2 with conditional rezoning. No different than when a property is approved for a PUD. If it's approved for a PUD or PRD, its designation automatically changes. The underlying zoning ceases to exist, and all development on the property is governed by the agreement that supersedes the underlying zoning. At this point of time, the applicant is asking for an amendment to M2 with conditions to allow for the original site design that was MT. Under state law, which is Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Section 125.3405, a conditional rezoning is a legislative change to the zoning map. And as such, based upon conditions offered by the applicant, a conditional rezoning agreement can be amended to allow for other uses with conditions. At this point of time, that is what the applicant is proposing. The next standard is this proposed conditional rezoning amendment is not involving a vacant piece of land or new construction. This is an industrial building which received site plan approval from Planning Commission in June of 2019. At the time, all aspects of the site, the site location, access, circulation, landscaping, building design, parking, all of it was designed in accordance to MT industrial transportation. That is what it was designed for. The next criteria is, is the proposed rezoning will result in integration of the proposed development project with the area in which it is located. Now, this building is smack dab in the middle of other industrial buildings, other industrial transportation-oriented buildings. So this site is not located or being developed in an area where there aren't other industrial buildings or where it is going to be adjacent to a single-family residential use or multiple-family residential use. It is located in an industrial zoning and will continue to remain designed as it currently stands in conformance to the ordinance standards. The proposed conditions will not preclude future zoning and planning actions. Now, while the action by the planning commission and the board places a conditional rezoning stamp on this property, it does not take away the township's rights in the future to unilaterally make changes to the zoning. The township reserves that right. The subject site is currently served by water and sewer, and the site was originally designed, the building was designed to accommodate the needs, so there'll be no additional utility needs beyond what the site was originally designed for. Now, the conditions that are being offered by the applicant at this time continue to include all of the original conditions that were placed on it. There is a prohibition on manufacture of automobile and automobile bodies. The agreement also prohibits heavy industrial manufacturing. These conditions will continue. All of the conditions that were there in the original agreement will continue to remain effective. The only change made will be the applicant is requesting the ability to add back industrial transportation, which is what the site was designed for. The subject site already has received site plan approval, so there is no change from that aspect because the site does comply. Based upon our review of the proposal presented by the applicant at this time, and based upon our review of ordinance Sections 12.505 E1 through 10, it is our recommendation that the applicant's request to amend the conditional rezoning agreement to permit the uses that are allowed in the MT meets the requirements for a conditional rezoning. Our recommendation therefore is that the planning commission recommend approval of the amendment to the conditional rezoning agreement that was originally executed in November 5th, 2022, to allow for MT uses as listed in Section 3.116 of the zoning ordinance, subject to two conditions. All other restrictions that were associated with the original conditional rezoning agreement that are listed as an exhibit and recorded will remain applicable. Any changes to the site will need to be submitted for approval by administration to ensure conformance to the originally approved site plan. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, Kyle Morton with Asha Capital. Vidya covered it pretty thoroughly. I think just from our standpoint, just kind of a quick high-level overview. When we started the project in 2019, we had the MT zoning in place, and we'd fully intended to, like Buildings 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, have an MT-type user. We came forward to this body specifically for our next energy for the battery use. Unfortunately, the agreement when we drafted it, I guess we were a little too optimistic. We wrote it in a very binary way. We never envisioned the tenant leaving 2/3 of the building. So we're kind of caught in a situation where really the only use I can backfill in that other portion of the building is a lithium ion battery company. We can't go back and use, find a tenant that has an MT use based off how we draft it. We basically would need the tenant to leave the entire building or find another battery use. So this provides us the flexibility to go find a very similar use. So though the agenda reads that we are asking to upzone the site, in effect, we're actually going back and downzoning this 2/3 of the building and allowing us to do similar things like we have in the rest of the park. So hopefully that makes sense. Unfortunately, our next energy ran into some financial troubles and was not able to expand into the rest of the building.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted to stay for questions or anything.
Yeah, I'm sure we're gonna have a couple. With that, commissioners, do we have any comments, questions? For either the developer or staff?
I've got one. Vidya, could you help? I think I'm a little lost here. Are we just reverting this back to MT? Or is it gonna be both MT and M2?
That's a really good question. You are not reverting it back to MT. The only time a property revert back to its original MT zoning is if the applicant violated the terms of the conditional rezoning agreement. Our next energy did in fact go in, so the terms of their conditional rezoning agreement are valid. So step zero was the property being zoned MT. Step one was an M2 rezoning with conditional rezoning agreement. They are now in step two, where they're asking to amend an agreement, which is currently the zoning layer that's on the property, to allow for uses that were originally allowed in step zero. So they are not going back. The only time the property can revert back to its original zoning is if they violated the terms of the agreement, which they have not.
So are they still allowed all M2 uses?
The original conditional rezoning agreement prohibits every single M2 use except a lithium ion battery manufacturer. And like Mr. Morton said, their only option right now is to find another lithium ion battery manufacturer for the 2/3 of the building, which is a tall order when the entire building can be only one use. So none of the uses allowed in the M2 will be permitted. The original terms of the conditional rezoning agreement will continue to remain valid. No manufacturing, no heavy manufacturing, no bump shops, no breweries, no plating, no automotive stamping, none of that will be permitted. The only M2 use will be the lithium ion battery manufacturer.
That's the only M2 use allowed?
That's the only M2 use that would be allowed.
Through the chair, I would just wonder for clarity, was there a graphic or plan that showed the extent of the property lines? It's not just the building, right?
It is the site, it is the property. The property has got an area of 45.16 acres. It's basically a perfect rectangle that captures Building 6 and the parking in and around it. I apologize, a clip of that building is not in your packet.
Packet near the end of the printed area, and it is a parcel. The document is labeled Certificate of Survey for Parcel Split.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's in the packet, and
second page of the packet, I don't know if that's helpful.
Good job.
It's a lot of pages up here today.
That in your packet? It is included in your packet as the Certificate of Survey in yellow highlights. That is Crossroads North Building 6.
Okay. Oh yeah, that's fine, that's all I need to know.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. If I, if you could expound on what exactly is the use that they're hoping to bring in that isn't allowed by M2, but is allowed by MT?
Sure, so through the chair. So when we went forward and did this conditional rezoning from MT to M2, the only thing that's allowed in this building right now is a lithium ion battery manufacturer, period. We can't use anything else in M2, and we no longer had the right to do anything in MT. So what we're looking to do is keep that M2 battery manufacturer, because our next energy is still in roughly 1/3 of the building. And then the other 2/3 of the building, we're just looking to do what we intended upfront. Same uses as DSV, FedEx, tenants that are on those, Ford, Scholastic, those groups. So general MT trucking uses. But the, we would have reverted to MT had our next energy left the entire building. Since they stayed in part of it, we were kind of caught in a drafting error where we should have included the MT uses originally in this agreement. So effectively, we're bringing 2/3 of the building back to what the original intention on the zoning side was.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also ask the applicant, what is our next energy doing now if they're not going to expand their manufacturing facility into the larger building? What are they building? What are they doing? What's their use now?
So to the best of our understanding is they have a pilot line that's producing lithium ion batteries in the northeast corner of the building. Think of that as a miniature line. They had intended on putting three full-size lines in the building, vertically in thirds, 1, 2, 3. Given the change in the automotive industry on the electric vehicle side, they've drastically scaled back their plans in the next few years. They are planning on putting one line into the building and finding another home for the other two lines in the future. It started to be an issue of, their plans were so slow, and they didn't want to be paying rent on the entire building for foreseeable future if they weren't using it.
Is the tenant still on a 10-year lease as required by the agreement?
The tenant is still under a lease, and it was at a minimum of 10 years. It was a 20-year original term. So yes, that lease is still in effect.
Any comments you want to make?
I don't, I don't see that being a problem. I guess they should be able to use the other 10% of the building, so I don't have a problem with that.
I just, what? If, if, what is it? Yes, if Next Energy decides they need the space, can they go ahead with the rest of the building once we turn this over to MT?
Yes, the original M2 conditional rezoning, which allows only for lithium ion, will still remain valid. They're just asking to be able to use. If our next energy ever expands or chooses to occupy a little bit more, they will still be valid under the terms of the original conditional rezoning.
Okay, so you wouldn't, they wouldn't have to come back before us again concerning this?
Come back before you for site plan approval, because their operations would require changes to the site, and none of those changes have been approved yet. So they would come back before you for approval of.
Site plan, but not for any zoning change? Okay.
Through the chair, practically speaking, if they come to put that first line in, they'll still have to come in for site plan approval for that, because it'll have improvements to the outside building, storage tanks, stuff like that.
Okay, no, I was just wondering about the zoning concern on that.
Mr. Chairman? Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the applicant remembers, we had a different staff during this approval process. I think it was Director Power was in charge of the.
The original approval was pre-Director Powers.
It was even before.
In 2019, I think, yeah.
Was it?
Back when Mr. Akers was.
Yes.
Okay.
It was back to you, so it's your fault.
It was like, my recollection of the reason that we had you go for a conditional rezoning, why we had the applicant go for a conditional rezoning, was because we were not allowed to put conditions on the existing zone to allow a use. We couldn't say, sure, your current zoning is MT. We'll rezone you to MT plus conditions, and the condition is you're welcome to build batteries there. That our local ordinance is specifically prohibited allowing conditions that were not more limiting than the regulations of the underlying zone. Therefore, in order to allow the battery plant to be built, the zone had to be moved up to M2. And then the applicant had to propose conditions that removed all of the bad M2 stuff, or the, it's not bad, nothing wrong with an M2, nothing wrong with manufacturing, okay, but.
Heavier uses.
The heavier uses that maybe weren't as compatible with the site. And the reason that they moved up to M2 was specifically because we weren't allowed to simply say, sure, go ahead, add on to your conditions, you can build, you can build a battery plant there. We had to rezone it to one that allowed battery plants, and then the applicant had to choose to abdicate the ability to do the other uses. I think that was my understanding of it.
Yes.
Okay. And what's, what concerns me, and the way it was explained to me, well, the way I remember it being explained to me, I don't have the minutes in front of me, like we did earlier. But the way I remember it being explained to me was that if we were to add a condition onto the zone, that would be essentially backdooring a use variance. That would be granting a usage that wouldn't be allowed in any other MT zone. And it's essentially backdooring a use variance, which as we know is not something we're allowed to do in the state of Michigan. So I, I understand the consultant's read of the, of what we're allowed to do here, but it seems to me, upon my read of the local ordinance, I haven't read the state law. I've got, I've got MCL 1253045 as an excerpt in front of me. I've read it, but I'm not an attorney. Best I can do is read it. But my read of our local ordinance does seem to indicate that in order to entertain a change like this, we're strict, we're again, not allowed to, any conditions that go into a conditional rezoning request have to be more strict or limiting than the regulations that would apply to the land under the new zoning district. That's 12507C2. It seems like by allowing the MT to come into this zone. It seems like by allowing the MT to come into this zone, that we are, we're putting in a condition that is less strict than what M2 is. M2 doesn't allow that, the, all of the uses that MT does. And it seems to me like we have a conflict in our local ordinance with perhaps what, what the state law is being read as, or what our consultant or our staff is reading it as. I'd like some more clarification from staff on what, what's up with that? Am I reading that just wrong? I mean, I'm looking at 12507E2, I'm looking at 12507C...
I'll try to provide some clarification through the chair. So districts are incremental in your use, as I've stated before. When you have a zoning district, you have single-family, or ag districts are the least intensive, then it goes incremental, R1A, R1B, R1C, degree of intensity increases. You have M1, which is a light industrial district, which is the least intensive of the industrial districts. Then you have M2, which is more intensive. Now, MT industrial transportation is a separate category of industrial transportation uses. It technically neither goes higher than M2, nor is it lower than M2. It is a district that technically stands on the same level as the other two industrial districts. What Commissioner Jar said, the reason why when they originally came with our next energy before you, you couldn't just allow for an MT district with battery manufacturer, because technically that is a de facto use variances, and use variances are not legal in the state of Michigan. Which is why the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act adopted and provided for a tool in 2006, which was conditional rezoning. It recognized the fact that sometimes there are districts where a specific use might be a fit, subject to a whole host of conditions being placed on it. You don't want it to be universally available to all such zoned parcels, but you want it to be available as a tool for individual parcels where you think a use might be a reasonable fit. So that is where the conditional rezoning tool came into effect. There's no way the applicant could have had a battery manufacturer in there with an industrial transportation designation. Their only option was to ask for a zoning designation where that use would be permitted. Now, if they straight asked for M2, it would have been a straight denial because it's not in conformance with the master plan. You cannot approve a rezoning that's not in conformance to the master plan. However, a conditional rezoning does not contradict a master plan because as long as the conditions are met, it is considered as being valid, and there is always a clause, if the conditions are violated, it de facto goes back to its original zoning. So you're not violating the master plan by doing that. And the key part about a conditional rezoning is all of the conditions have to be offered by the developer, they cannot be asked for by the township because it places the township and the developer in a very strange situation where it might be perceived that you're making demands on a property owner beyond the realm of your authority that is granted to you under zoning. So a conditional rezoning is something where the applicant has to voluntarily offer to restrict themselves, and in this case, Ashley agreed to restrict themselves to every single use except a lithium-ion battery manufacturer, which placed them in the situation they find themselves in currently, battery, lithium-ion batteries or nothing. So their only option at this time is to amend the original conditional rezoning agreement. So you are not conditionally rezoning an MT parcel to M2 and going back to MT. You conditionally rezoned it from MT to M2 with conditions, and now M2 with conditions with added uses of MT. So you're going to another level, you are not going backwards. It is a very convoluted process. The way our ordinance reads and the way the state law reads might create confusion, but I can assure you, you're on 100% sound legal ground.
In the MT, what is allowed in MT? Is that just trucking?
The MT, if you could, Brittany, please pull up the MT district. It's basically distribution centers, that's the whole reason why the MT district was created, and our master plan specifically says that industrial trucking, which is the MT district, is limited to the property, all of which is owned by Ashley. There is no other portion of the township that is zoned for or master planned for industrial trucking except these parcels. Brittany, if you could just read out what the MT allows?
Yes. Supermitted uses are wholesale sales, warehousing, excluding distribution centers, manufacturing and processing light, laboratories, minor laboratories, major, public utility buildings, telephone exchange buildings, electric transformer stations and substations as gas regulator, sorry, and gas regulator stations are included stor, including storage yards, not necessary to serve the immediate vicinity, accessory structures and uses customarily identical to the above permitted uses. And then special land uses are distribution centers and accessory caretake dwellings.
So distribution centers are buildings that are basically over 250,000 square feet in-floor area and have a dock-to-floor area ratio between 1,400 square feet and 1,800 square feet. That's what technically makes a building a distribution center. If it's got fewer docks, it's a gigantic warehouse.
Through the chair, when we, when we originally did site plan approval in 2019, we got special land use approval for the distribution building because it was this size in MT.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jar?
I just want to make it clear, I, I think that building is better off as an MT district building. It was designed to be MT, and really, my question is really just procedural. I'm, my concern is that when I read the ordinance, it says that, my read of it, again, non-attorney, and I'm, I'm never going to say I am one, but my read of it was that by letting him, letting this happen, it's the same as the first case where we couldn't let him, let the applicant build the battery, just like we couldn't do it the first time there, we can't, I add new conditions into this M2 zone to allow it. That's, that's my concern, and that if we do it and we, we allow this, that maybe we may have set some precedent that says that it is okay the next time maybe someone comes and asks us for a conditional rezoning for a lithium-ion phosphate battery plant, and, and maybe we, we will, we will think that's okay to give it. I, I feel like the, it's possible that our local ordinance and the state ordinance are, are in conflict in this, and that if that is the case, we may need to revisit our wording in our current ordinance, because if it could, if it can be this easily confused by someone who's been doing it for a little while, then maybe it needs some, some, some...
Tweaking.
And, and just to be clear, one last question for the applicant, if I may. You're sure that, that one, that one next energy pilot plant, that's not a laboratory, is it? That really is a manufacturing-for-sale products? It's, it's not a laboratory, right?
At the best of my knowledge, they're producing batteries for third parties.
For third parties, okay, they're not a laboratory, too bad. That would be permit, that would be permitted in MT.
So, Mr. Chairman? I would be happy to take a look at the zoning ordinance language to make sure it gives you a level of comfort moving forward. That said, procedurally, if you were to send it, it would be perfectly fine if you want the township attorney to take a look at it one more time before Township Board takes final action on it. It is assured that the process we are following are correct, just in case there are any reservations. Also, I want to add, conditional rezoning is never a situation in which you're likely to set a precedent, because the whole way a conditional rezoning works is, the developer proposes the conditions, you don't like it, you just deny it. You don't need to tell them by your denying it, you just don't find the conditional acceptable. You can't tell the developer, your conditions are okay, if you had added this in, I would be okay. You can't say that either. You can just say it's all or nothing. So that's, so there is no precedent, you won't be setting a precedent by doing this. If the next person comes and tries to do this, we don't have, we have probably one another conditionally rezoned property that I can remember off the top of my head in the township. So if anybody comes, you're perfectly within your realm of authority of saying that, no, the conditions are not acceptable, hence recommending denial, so.
Through the chair, so based on what you're saying is, everything's good with how the, the language is written, how it's interpreted, it just, based on what you're saying, it just maybe could be a little clearer?
Yes, exactly.
So, we have a guarantee?
I'm comfortable that the language is written correctly, but if it appears confusing, I'm happy to take a look and make it even more clear.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay, do we have anybody from the public for this item now?
Cannot at all, claim to understand all of the zoning, but also as being a resident...
Reintroduce yourself and talk into the microphone, please.
Monique Kerkowski. And again, because I, I cannot understand all of the language that you're using, and I, I probably will never attempt to, but I am a citizen in that local area, I would consider it my neighborhood. I'm acutely aware all of a sudden that zoning matters, and it matters a lot. And so I'm asking the question, with the M2, knowing an M1 allows a lot in our community, what is the transparency for any toxic, nuclear, large-scale data center, or any other use in that building? What is the transparency to the public to know how it's being used, since we don't know who the tenant will be?
So when the uses are permitted under, whatever are the principal permitted uses under the MT district that Ms. Williams read out, those uses, the applicant will be able to occupy the building, as it was approved for in 2019. If they are attempting, data centers are not permitted in the MT district, nor are they allowed in the M2. Data centers cannot go in on the site.
Not to interrupt, but just for my education, so the lesser category, M1, they are allowed?
The M1 is the least industrial, so when zoning ordinance districts are incremental, the lower districts' uses are automatically permissible in the higher. Whether it is, it's current, even if the Planning Commission takes no action today, the basic M1 uses are automatically applicable to the property because they are folded in under the MT too. It is the base industrial district. You have to permit some uses on a property that's owned industrial. Those are the most basic uses that would be permitted.
So the question that I have then, and not to you at all, but to, to my concern, is the M1 classification and maybe all of the zoning classifications way out of date with the new technology and building that they're doing? Because there's no way that the lesser M1 should fit under a hyperscale data center.
That is a good question for the Planning Commission, and that is something, yes, if that is a concern, the use profile of the uses that are permitted in districts can always be revisited and revised to adjust the uses, move certain uses into a more intensive category so they're not permitted in the lesser intensive category. That's a very valid, valid point, too.
But I, I caution you also, because especially if it's a higher classification, that even more toxic things like nuclear, which is going to power these data centers, would then also be allowed. That classification needs to be either ordnanced to the M degree or reclassified. So then back to my question, what is the transparency with this now, if it's, if I'm reading it right, although I'm a little confused whether it's MT and M2, and I honestly don't know the difference, but I'm concerned about M1, a lesser degree. What is the transparency to the community in what the future tenant can be to protect us?
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I ask to have staff quickly review the allowed uses, the permitted uses in M1? You read M2, would it be possible to read the M1 permitted uses for my edification so that we know what's permitted there?
So the permitted uses of the M1 light industrial district are wholesale sales, warehousing, excluding distribution centers, manufacturing and processing light, laboratories minor, laboratories major, retail dry cleaning plants and laundries, public utility buildings, telephone exchange buildings, electric transformer stations and substations, and gas regulator stations, including storage yards when necessary to serve the immediate vicinity, high-tech data processing and computer centers, accessory outdoor industrial storage, accessory structures and uses customarily incidental to the above permitted uses, indoor recreation and small off-site battery energy storage systems.
That's majorly out of date.
It does seem like a data center would fall under computer, under the M1 category, is that...
The word that's written in there, data center, right? And, and these rules are written for data centers that are this big. They're not this big anymore, and they exceed any of our understanding, any of our ability to regulate, it's over our heads, we have to be careful. That designation needs to be reviewed.
We are happy to review it on Planning Commission's direction, yes.
Yeah.
You're correct. At the time these ordinances and the uses went in, the use descriptions for industrial uses was remarkably different. It is something that Director Akers and we have internally discussed about exactly what are light industrial, heavy industrial, industrial transportation uses, and the definitions probably need revisiting, and that is something we have been working on behind, but with Planning Commission's direction to revisit the use districts, we can get the direction if the Planning Commission should choose to do so.
For my education, where will nuclear fall under that? Because I'm thinking heavy laboratory or something similar, it could fall under there easily?
We have a section in our zoning ordinance that is called environmental performance, and that regulates any kind of toxic substances, any toxic materials, any nuclear wastes, and how they are done. We believe those kind of things are regulated under our solid, solid-based ordinance, we have an entire provision for solid base because we have landfill and we have US ecology.
Well, I think, and I apologize for, because I, as I know, we had spoke on the phone last week, I think you're referring to those small modular reactors, the SMRs, right?
We're going to have them, right? We know they are. And so I just want to be careful, too, because I want to plant that seed in your head, because the electrical grid cannot handle a hyperscale data center, which I'm not sure how far along you are in getting that approved. They cannot handle it, so the next step is going to be nuclear, I'm positive of it, or something bigger than that even, but because we do not understand the technology. Whatever was here a year and a half ago will not be here a year and a half from now, and it will be something more powerful than nuclear, or at least nuclear. So I'm asking you to be careful with the community and their health and safety and well-being, that we look at these zoning. I realize now that it's like saving my home and my life to follow up with what your zoning is, and that, I mean, for all communities everywhere, please keep up with the times because it's not, it's not fair.
That's, that's why we have to revisit our master plan every five years, I believe it is.
Go faster than that, technology is way too quick for that.
But that's also why we want public input when we do review that master plan, so that we have your view. That's what we're here for, is to try to protect you as much as we can with a zoning that's given onto the land.
But we're trusting you to do it for us when we can't be here.
But we need your views. We need your input.
Do I ask that one last question before I walk away? What's the transparency under this new M2 category that they have in this massive building that I just drove by, that would be the size of a starter of a hyperscale data center? What is the protection transparency?
They can only, only put in a lithium-ion battery. Otherwise, it is transportation, it is warehousing, distribution, that end. They cannot put in any other type of manufacturing. Am I correct?
Brittany, just take a look at the MT district. Does the MT district say that the under M1 uses are permitted because the MT was set up as a separate district? It might not fold in any of the M1 uses, it's strictly for MT uses?
Go ahead.
No, so, so the way our zoning district is, is, the way our zoning districts are set up, MT does not have computer centers, data centers as a permitted land use. The, the M2 district does allow the permitted land uses in the M1 light industrial district. However, if I understand the condition, Nvidia, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I understand the conditional rezoning agreement, the way it's structured, the only M2 district that can be done on the site is the lithium-ion battery manufacturing.
Thank you for raising the question. So the clarification, typically, the underlying district's use is permitted, but the way our MT district is set up, it does not allow for M1 uses. Data center can...
Or M2.
Or M2 uses, the only M2. The only M2 use that can go in is a lithium-ion battery manufacturer, very, very specific type of manufacturing. Data centers cannot go in on the site because the MT district use profile does not allow for it. But any other M2 zone sites would allow what? And the M2 zone sites are in other portions of the township, not in this portion of the township. And there's no M2 zoned parcel over here, which would allow the underlying M1. So with regard to this specific building and site that your question is, none of the uses that are permitted in the M1 district of our zoning ordinance will be allowed. What will be allowed is specifically what is allowed in the MT Section 3... What will be allowed is specifically what is allowed in the MT Section 3.116, is it?
I believe so, yes.
I think it is 3.116.
3.117.
MT is 3.117?
He is 3.116.
And M2 is 3.117, right?
Correct. So whatever is allowed in Section 3.116 specifically to industrial transportation, which was read out, which is basically warehousing, distribution center, public utility building substations, which are allowed even today. Only those uses will be allowed. The data centers, which are currently our ordinance does allow in the M1 district, would not be able to go in into the site.
Please review that.
Yes.
Yes, we will. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I was wondering if we could ask staff quickly, if you can get it quickly, to let me know whether the computer data center usage in the M1 district is a special land use or a by right land use?
I believe it's a principal permitted use.
Principal permitted use?
Yep, by right land use.
It's a by right land use.
It is a by right land use in M1, M2, and OT.
At the time, the use was written, like was stated by the resident, those data centers were a building with... It was a very different...
All-encompassing, rather than a small, single, smaller building data center. Now there's hyperscale data centers, which is a different animal altogether.
But as the ordinance standards, they are principal permitted uses.
Very narrow definition of what they are.
Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I've got the agreement right in front of me, and it really doesn't say... I don't see it saying that the only use is for a lithium ion battery manufacturer. I see that they have to have at least one lithium ion battery manufacturer, and that they're not allowed to do the M2 zoning district's special land uses. But I don't see a clause in there that specifically prevents the M1 permitted land uses. And M1s are allowed in M2. So I think reviewing it is... I mean, this is the agreement that's in place. They've, they've got the permission to do this M1 development. It's just a, you know, I don't, I don't want to give a, a quick reading and say, "The agreement says all they can put in is batteries." That's not what the agreement says, right? That's, that's not what the agreement says.
What it sounded like, what was discussed is that the only allowable M2 is lithium battery. And once, if they went out of business, they could only replace it with the same, or it could only be MT.
That's how I read the agreement. I believe that was the basis for the original agreement. That's, that was the understanding when one energy went in, when the township attorney helped draft this, reviewed this agreement. I believe that, that was the understanding.
The agreement doesn't really cover what happens if you try to sublease out a different part of the building.
So you're concerned about it, which means it probably makes some sense, maybe, to raise the question of going to the attorney before there's a final decision.
I think that would be a good idea, and send it up to the Board of Trustees with a recommendation that the attorney review the, review the existing agreement and to make sure that, and to make sure that, yeah, that the language of the ordinance, that we're in line with the language of the ordinance. But I think there's enough question there about it that it would certainly be... I trust, like I said earlier, I trust my staff. And if you guys say that's how it is, I believe you. But I think the Board of Trustees ought to put a lawyer on it.
You would like a clarification from the township attorney to ensure that the agreement, when it says the only M2 use that is permitted is a lithium ion battery manufacturer, doesn't by default allow M1 uses because it happens to be an M2 district? Because all the M2 uses are prohibited.
Or, or any MT uses permitted?
That's the request, I believe, that any MT use, that's what we're being asked to grant.
Mr. Martin?
Through the chair, I, I think, subject to a yes and to the review by the attorney, we are okay to specifically clarify, we are asking for MT uses and just the M2 battery use that is existing in the building. We are not looking to revert and pull any quick ones. We just want back to what we had approval as MT. So we are, we are not looking to add other uses. And I believe that was the intent of the original agreement.
Martin, are you specifically offering the condition as a clarification that the amendment you're requesting at this time is clarifying that no M1 uses will be permitted by default on this property?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to see that agreement before we recommend it up to the Township Board.
Can add that as a condition for it to be added and a revised agreement to be provided before it goes to the board with the Township Attorney's review, and we will bring the copy of that to you. But the applicant voluntarily offering it at a public meeting is something, if you do a motion, you can add it to your motion as being voluntarily offered.
Works for us.
Anyone else from the public with any comments? Anyone else from the public? Any? Okay, with that, Commissioners. What is your desire concerning this item?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Grant's desire is that I make the motion. If you give me just a moment to organize my thoughts, I think I could entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just take a quick straw poll of the other Commissioners. If I were to entertain a motion saying, update it with the... If a proposal was sent back to us with the updated condition that the applicant made in the public meeting for our review, what do we want to do here? We just want to move that the applicant come back with an updated request? Or should we request that his proposed condition be included for review by the trustees at the board level with our approval?
Seems like it would be one and the same, right?
But they're, to the board, they're going to want, what you want to do as to what the request was. Do you want to approve the request?
Then I feel like I should probably see that request in writing before we send it up to the trustees. And staff should review it, too. Yeah?
You have two options before you. You could either ask for that condition to be put in writing into the agreement and for the applicant to come back before you. Or the other thing is, in your motion, you can specify that the applicant's voluntarily offered condition to prohibit any M1-related uses on the property will be added as a condition, and a revised agreement must be submitted for review and approval by the Township Attorney prior to being forwarded for final action to the Township Board of Trustees. So that will ensure that the Planning Commission has its base covered.
I wish I could just say what Ms. Krishnan said. That was good.
You want your phrase if you want me to...
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I think that I would move to recommend to the Township Board that they approve the amendment to the conditional rezoning agreement associated with the previously approved request, Case 22033, for the applicant, Ashley Capitals Crossroads Distribution Center North 6 LLC, with the condition that the applicant amend their request for conditions to indicate their desire to exclude M1 uses as well as to allow the MT uses based on the analysis and subject to the conditions that were presented in the McKenna letter dated, here's where I need some help, dated November 14th, and that the, and that the requested amendment shall be reviewed by the Township legal staff before being, before our recommendation is forwarded on to the Board of Trustees. It felt very long, but I think, did I get it all?
Was there going to be a modification to the agreement in writing that's submitted and reviewed by Township staff first?
Yes.
Okay.
The implication of the motion made by Commissioner Jar is the amended agreement has to be provided in writing for our legal counsel. So in effect, all of the conditions of the original conditional rezoning that prohibits all M2 uses, all heavy industrial uses, will continue to remain valid. The amendment would only allow MT uses with an added condition being offered that no M1 uses shall go in on this property.
I believe that is what I said.
That's what he said, yeah.
And noting specifically, I'll just add, also noting, noting specifically the concerns brought up by the public this evening, and that the applicant proposed the additional conditions. They were not presented to him in any way. That, I believe, is my motion. I seek your support.
Your support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jar, supported by Commissioner Grant. Do we have any discussion concerning the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Sherri Budd?
Yes.
Bernie Grant?
Yes.
Jackson Paul? Jeff Jar? Brian Cullen?
Yes. So, the motion carries. You're going to have it once the agreement is put together and reviewed by the attorney, and we see it. And then it goes to the board. Okay. Otherwise, we're all set on that. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jar?
I want to say thank you to our very dedicated staff for explaining that and taking the time to give it to us in such detail. That's, that's not easy to do on the spot, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving ahead. Wow. Case, item number two, Case 21032, Brookwood Senior Housing, Final Site Plan Extension. A request by applicant Chris Garner on behalf of owner SB Invest LP to extend the final site plan approval. This site is located on the north side of Tyler Road, east of Morton Taylor, and west of Springwood Boulevard. First up, presentation by the applicant.
Chris Garner, on behalf of the owner group. As everybody's aware, this took us a long time to get to approval, and it's taken us a little bit to get to actual build. We are pleased to announce that we have completed a capital stack on the investment side, and we're looking to actually start construction in the spring. That was the big delay, was just getting through the economics of the, of the capital. And you know, everybody's aware, things have changed in the last six, nine months, and it's getting a little easier to raise funds, so that's where we're at. And we're still looking forward to... And just so everybody aware, the, our Taylor project is up and running, is fully, fully constructed. We're finishing the last, just the inside of the last four buildings, and have already started leasing, and it's been well-adopted into the marketplace. We've already got 12 leases since, since we opened the doors in September.
Fantastic. Okay. Planning Commissioners, questions for?
Question for staff, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
He's eligible for the extension, right?
Yes.
And it's a one-year extension that would be from today's meeting?
Yes.
From today's date?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see any problem with granting the extension.
From that, do we have anybody from the public with a comment on the development? Anybody from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, what is the commission's desire?
Mr. Chairman, I feel like I'm getting a little hoarse, but Mr. Commissioner Grant would like to be recognized.
Take a motion to grant the applicant, Chris Garner, on behalf of the owner SB Investment LP, to extend the final site plan approval for one year from today's date. Sites located on the north side of Tyler Road, east of Morton Taylor Road, and west of Springfield Boulevard.
Springwood Boulevard.
Springwood Boulevard, thank you.
Support, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Grant, supported by Commissioner Jar. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Paul?
Yes.
Bernie Grant? Sherri Budd?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Yes. So you have your extension. Yes, thank you. Looking forward to seeing the project go in place. And item number three this evening. US Signal Expansion Preliminary Site Plan Approval. A request by owner, US Signal Properties LLC, to continue phased construction of the data center. The site is located at 9275 Hagerty Road. Presentation first by Township staff. Ms. Ed, Ms. Williams?
I refer to our planning consultant, Vidya Krishnan.
Thank you, Brittany. Good evening, Commissioners. So the request before you tonight is from US Signals. The site is located on the east side of Hagerty Road, northeast corner of Hagerty Road and Tyler Road, and is currently occupied by a data processing center. It is zoned OT, which is Office Technology, where high-tech data processing and computer centers are permitted by right. It is a use by right in the OT district.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a point of privilege, we didn't get a printout of your letter today in the packet. So if we, if we ask you to just repeat what you said, it's because we can't follow it.
I would be happy to. So this is a site that is zoned OT, Office Technology, and data processing centers, computer centers are principal permitted uses in this district. In 2019, the applicant had come before the Planning Commission, and they received approval for four phases of the project. The first phase was 25,000 square feet, which they were immediately planning to build. And then they had three other phases, 25,000 square foot each, for a total of 100,000 square feet building. And at the time, the applicant had stated that these phases, two to four expansions, will be determined by customer demand. But the expectation would be that a phase would be built every 24 months. So technically, it's 2025. All the phases should have been built by now. But no additional phases were built. And our records indicate that no performance bonds were collected at that time either. So at this time, the applicant is coming back in order to build future phases. The thing is, the phasing plan is completely different than what was originally proposed. When you change the actual layout of the site, it needs to come back before Planning Commission for the whole process of site plan approval. So at this time, Phases 2 and 3 are being constructed as a 35,000 square foot addition. And there is still a future Phase 4, which is approximately 27,000 square feet, for a total building area of 87,100. Originally in 2019, they had planned 100,000, but now it's going to be 87,100, approximately 13,000 square foot less. So now, the current phase requires the removal of some existing circulation pathway entries. So the applicant was under the assumption they are seeking approval for Phase 4 also. However, we do not have enough information on Phase 4, so this review is strictly limited to Phases 2 and 3 only. If and when they build Phase 4, they'll have to come back before you for approval of that phase again. So we are reviewing only Phases 2 and 3, which is for a 35,000 square foot addition to the existing 25,000 square foot building. With regard to the lot area, the parcel has got a total area of 7.91 acres. The existing face complies with all of the setback requirements. Now, this property fronts on the west side on Hagerty Road, on the south side on Tyler Road, and on the north side on Ricardo Drive. Ricardo Drive is an internal industrial drive which connects to several industrial buildings. The proposed addition does comply with all of the setback requirements. The maximum permitted building height also, the proposed building complies... The maximum permitted building height also the proposed building complies with. This face has got a height of 25 feet 6 inches. That is the maximum building height, which is well within the 45 feet permitted under the OT district. No changes are proposed to curb cuts. The existing curb cut of Hagerty and of Ricardo Drive will remain as such. Now, the original site plan showed a fire circulation around the entire site. It was shown at the perimeter of future phases two, three, and four. So it went along the edges of the property, even though phase one was only a singular phase. The circulation drive was, at the time, based upon what the fire department wanted, was a gravel surface. Fire department said it was acceptable at the time until the future phases were constructed. At this time, that exterior circulation drive is a full paved 20-foot-wide asphalt drive which loops around the entire site, and it does have mountable curbs. So it is not intended as a full circulation drive for pedestrian vehicles, customers' vehicles, or, I'm sorry, not customers, employee vehicles. It is strictly for fire department. So the fire department should be able to go around the entire site. So at this time, the 20-foot width is acceptable. If it were intended for vehicles, other vehicles, the minimum required width is 24 feet. So in this case, 20 feet is what the fire department requires and has been provided. Now, the site plan refers to the original 2019 plan for truck circulation diagram. Since the face designs have been changed, a new circulation diagram needs to be submitted. We cannot cross-reference old plans when we are dealing with a whole new site plan. So we need a new truck circulation plan, which is subject to review by both the township engineer and the fire department. There is no cross-access proposed. These kind of facilities are secure facilities, so typically, they do not connect to neighboring properties, most industrial facilities. So cross-access is not an issue on this. The site has got existing sidewalks along Ricardo Drive, Tyler, and Hagerty Road frontages. There is also a sidewalk shown on the west side of the building with a connector to a service entrance. So all of the sidewalk network on the site is existing. There are no new sidewalk connections being proposed. With regard to parking space dimensions, I'm on page three of my letter, if you want to flip to it.
Hey!
So, there are no new parking spaces being constructed at this time, but we still like to make sure that whatever was constructed still is in compliance with the ordinance standards. They have shown the dimensions of the parking spaces on the west side of the building. There are three spaces on the north side of the building, which we had asked to be striped in compliance as a condition of final site plan approval in 2019. I want to check whether they have complied with it in 2025, so that still needs to be shown. The required handicap accessible spaces are shown on the property. The required number of loading spaces are also shown. With regard to landscaping and screening, the 2019 plan approval included an extensive landscape plan which took account of the entire site's development. There are no new requirements applicable to them beyond that. So the applicant will have to conform to a previously approved landscape plan for the site, which is up to date and conforms to our current ordinance, too. With regard to detention pond landscaping, in light of what we just had happen earlier in today's agenda, what we learnt... So the landscape plan does show plantings around the detention pond, so the applicant is not proposing any changes to it, but we want to make sure that the pond was engineered, designed to support the proposed phases. So that is something the township engineer would be reviewing. With regard to tree removal permit, the trees that are being removed were ones that were previously part of their site's landscaping. So they are removing a total... Some of these trees were previously part of site landscaping, but they are established trees, so when you're removing them, if they are regulated trees, five inches DBH and greater, you need to provide replacement. Per their plan, a total of 37 trees are to be removed, which is 17 evergreen and 20 deciduous trees. They're proposing replacement on a one is to one basis, but they're proposing only 16 evergreen and 19 deciduous trees. I'm not sure how two trees were missed out, but those two missing trees need to go back in there for replacement. With regard to lighting, they have submitted a photometric plan. The photometric plan overall appears to comply. However, there's one specific fixture that they have shown on there as a wall-mounted fixture above the entrances that looks more like a floodlight. Even though it technically is shown as a fixture that has got a flat lens, it appears to not comply with our ordinance standards of what we require under our new lighting ordinance. So we would like either a replacement fixture or pictures of a real light fixture that has been turned on to see if it actually meets our ordinance requirement. All of the fixtures are compliant with the new CCT rating of 3,000 Kelvin that we put into our new ordinance. With regard to architecture and building, they have submitted elevations for the proposed building addition, which shows that the structure is going to be constructed of textured precast concrete panels in three different shades of gray to match the existing building. The only relief feature on the north facade is two small windows. While I understand the nature of the business itself does not lend itself to putting a whole bunch of windows on it, that said, the appearance of this proposed addition is extremely utilitarian. I will use that word. The south facade is going to be blocked by future phase four if and when it's built, but the north facade is clearly visible from Ricardo Drive, and the wall length is over 350 feet. There are several large mechanical units also present in front of it, so there are really no relief features. On recent projects, the planning commission has discussed that even though these are industrial buildings, there is no reason for them to look very utilitarian, that within the realm of what an industrial building can be, features or use of mix of materials or colors should be done in order to make these buildings more appealing. We believe the way this addition is proposed, it is going to be visible from southbound and northbound Hagerty Road, and from eastbound Ricardo Drive. So, our recommendation is that the applicant present a true colored rendering or a 3D visual of the appearance of the north facade of the building, and I would also like to defer to planning commission's input on what the appearance of this facade is. There is a trash enclosure that was approved with the original site plan. No new enclosures are being proposed at this time. The original enclosure is compliant. There is a slight discrepancy in incidental signage with regard to fire lanes, just want the applicant to resolve that. There is no new fencing being proposed. The plan originally received approval for an eight-foot-tall fencing, which is already there on here. The biggest thing about this project was the mechanical equipment. When the site plan was originally approved, the plan showed a generator on the south side of the property along Tyler Road frontage. Now, when we reviewed it, a generator was a standard-sized generator, which we assumed was similar to what would be an AT&amp;T generator box. But once installed, we found that these generators are not the small generators. These are those huge-sized generators, which was not anticipated. So, the plan shows three generators and three transformers on the east side of the proposed addition. Now, this is the internal side yard. It butts up to another industrial property on Ricardo, not really visible. There are three HwAC equipment shown on the north side of the addition, and the proposed equipment is in addition to large generators that were installed on the north and south sides of the current building. Now, this is not a standard household or industry-sized equipment, but these are small building-sized, you know, small trailer building-sized generators. We would like to have details of all mechanical equipment. What is the size of these generators and transformers? What is their height? What is their appearance? What is their color? These need to be screened from view of site. Now, screening calculations have been provided on the landscape plan, but we cannot determine compliance with ordinance standards because the screening says eight-foot-tall arbor whitey and shrubs. Now, if the equipment is 15 feet tall and eight-foot-tall screen fence is really not doing what the ordinance wants it to do. So without the benefit of what this equipment looks like or what its size is, we cannot evaluate whether the screening intent of the ordinance is actually being met. Now, proposed phases two and three generators are represented on the architectural elevations with a black outline, but there are no other pertinent details. We are not asking for any proprietary details on the equipment, but we do need to know bare minimum of, are these cylinders? Are these boxes? If they are boxes, are they eight by 10? Are they 15 feet tall? Without that, I cannot determine whether the screening intent is being met. In previous... Previously, when we had met with the applicant during staff review, we noted that the screening that is there for the generator on the south side along Tyler Road is inadequate. It does not meet what the ordinance needs it to do. Now, the plan does note that they are adding an eight-foot-tall equipment screen, but when you look at the civil drawings, the generator and the tank that are currently there are 16.67 feet tall, almost double the height of the screen fence that you're proposing. So we want to see a colored rendering to show how effective the screen is. If there is an eight-foot screen, what are we going to be seeing above that eight, going up till 16.67? Is it just going to look like a regular building, in which case, it can just be painted a color and be unobtrusive? But is it actually going to be pipes or something else different? So we need to know what it looks like. The site plan at this time has got several issues that do remain to be addressed, but these are issues that are not going to alter the actual site layout itself or the site's functioning. These are additional information in terms of landscaping, screening, so on and so forth. So our recommendation is that the planning commission grant preliminary site plan approval only for phases two and three only, subject to several conditions. Those conditions being revision of the permit list to cover all the permits that are required, submission of a new truck circulation plan for the site, notation of parking space dimension on the north side, planning commission approval of a parking deviation requested upon submission of adequate data and justification. I'm sorry, I missed covering that. Now, the applicant has provided parking calculations, which show that you're building a new 35,000 square foot addition, which has got office space in it. It does require more parking, but the applicant is saying that whatever parking we have there is more than enough to meet, because these data centers are not highly staffed. They're mostly machinery with just a few employees. But we cannot just assume that the applicant needs to provide data of how many employees come to the site or not, and based upon that, the planning commission can grant the deviation. Replacement of light fixture number two, or demonstration of compliance with lighting ordinance, township engineer approval of stormwater detention, addition of relief features to the north facade of the building, and planning commission input on building architecture, correction regarding fire lane sign discrepancy, and finally, submission of details regarding all proposed mechanical equipment on site, and demonstration of screening adequacy for generator and equipment along Tyler Road. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Mr. Lepick?
Thank you. Fischbeck has reviewed the November 11th, 2025, site plans for the US Signal Facility Expansion located at 9275 Hagerty Road. Plans are submitted to the township for preliminary site plan review. In general, all existing and proposed utilities should be indicated and labeled on the site plans with utility size, material inverts, and rim all elevations. For sanitary sewer, there does appear to be a proposed sanitary service that routes around the south side of the building to a sanitary sewer lift station. Additional details, including rim and invert elevations, and the existing sanitary service line work must be shown and labeled on all plans. Basis of design calculations will be reviewed as part of the final site plan, and engineering review submittal calculations must account for the total future build-out of the site, including all phases. We recommend the applicant and the site plans include a separate utility plan, clearly indicating all existing and proposed utilities. There was a little bit of trouble understanding all the utilities going on in this site. Stormwater management, the site was previously designed, and stormwater management system was approved for the full build-out of the site. That being said, we don't anticipate a Wayne County permit being needed for this project, but it's a responsibility of the applicant to confirm that and provide any correspondence to the township from the county. Previous approved stormwater management designs were provided and reviewed. Stormwater management calculations will fully be reviewed during the final site plan and engineering review, and they must clearly show that the previously designed C-values and basin capacities are not exceeded, and no modifications to the system are proposed. For paving grading, all geometrics will be subject to the township fire marshal's review for emergency accessibility. As noted in the planning review, the applicant should confirm that the planer and the fire marshal have reviewed the 20-foot maneuvering lane around the east side, southeast and north side of the site. Per the engineering standard, a 24-foot-wide maneuvering lane is required. It was noted that it's only for fire emergency. However, we noticed a loading dock in the back, so I recommend that gets reviewed and approved if the 20 foot's okay, or if the 20 foot's okay, 24 foot is required. It looked like there was some mechanical equipment and a loading dock in the back on the east side of the building that loop road might be servicing. And all driveways, sides of parking lots, maneuvering lanes shall have a concrete curb and gutter to delineate the drive aisles and a direct storm runoff to the stormwater management system. The applicant indicated they received a soil erosion and sedimentation control permit, so the applicant shall provide a copy of the obtained soil erosion and sedimentation control permit for the township review and record. At this time, Fischbeck recommends planning commission grant the US Signal Facility Expansion site plans dated November 11th, 2025, preliminary site plan approval, subject to the comments listed above. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Fire Department Letter dated November 25th, 2025. So it says, "The fire department access is non-compliant. Approved access roads shall be provided for every facility, building, or portion of building hereafter constructed." The emergency vehicle access plan shown in sheet C3 on the site plan references the 430 2019 site plan. An updated fire truck access plan needs to be shown using the ladder truck dimensions that are listed in the letter. The plans... Sorry, the plans state that the fire department connection will be relocated as part of this project and will be approved by the fire marshal prior to construction. And the water supply is approved. An approved water supply capable of supplying the required fire flow for fire protection shall be provided on premises on which facilities, buildings, or portions of buildings are here after constructed or moved in to or within the jurisdiction. Specific comments are the fire apparatus access road will need to be maintained all year around the facility. And tanks succeeding 60-gallon capacity or an aggregate capacity of 1,000 gallons that are not provided with an integral secondary contaminant shall be provided with spill contaminant sized to contain a release from the largest tank. This was addressed in the response letter dated November 11th, 2025. I will answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Presentation by the applicant. Do we have the applicant here? Ford, please introduce yourself to us.
My name's Stacy Ford, and I'm a model worker. I have some pictures of the parking. Parking lot pictures tonight. I have this, too. I don't know.
Let's do this. Hang on one second.
Well, for sake of size here, the time date stamp, this is from security cameras. You can see at the bottom, this is, we've got three days and three evenings. The first, this is on the north parking lot, on October 13th, at approximately 2:00 p.m. And then, this is the west parking lot. And then this is the west parking lot, the biggest of their lots. The north one is, I think, three spaces. And then the west one is 25 spaces. They have a total of 28. This is approximately 2:00 P.M. on the 13th. We have another one. There's the north side. The spaces are right here. So they're, I apologize for not pointing that out on the first ones, you know, where you were looking for cars at in the lot. Now, it was 7:15 in the evening. Empty up front at 7:15. And then this is the north lot on the 16th at 2:00 in the afternoon. This is the picture with the most cars in it, if you want me to stop here. We can't. This is, I'll scroll through the rest. I think there's approximately, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, about 10 cars, I think I count. And then this, and those two are on the 16th. Now, this is the 16th in the evening. And west. And then the 20, I think, 24th, the north parking. So we were, we were hoping to not have to add any additional parking at this point for the phases. There is room for parking if we need it. About 12 spaces on, 12 spaces on the west side. We could extend this parking lot here further south and get 12 spaces in there quite easily. We were hoping to possibly not have to do that until the later phase, the phase four. Then we will have a full idea of what the, what the facility needs. If they want some additional employee parking, we can, you know, wrap up, wrap up the site and the parking during phase four. There's enough parking right now to accommodate everything, we believe. There, I just wanted to give you the pictures so you had a good idea of what we're looking at. And video covered everything quite well. This was, this was what I had for my presentation. So I'll give it back to you guys and answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners?
To the chair. Questions? I'll be quick. So first, how is the center going to be cooled?
My name is Andrew Bajuzik. That's a engineer and build. We're the design builder for U.S. Signal. The proposed expansion for the data center is going to be perimeter air-cooled equipment, which will use a crawl unit. The heat transfer to reject that heat will be a chilled water plant that will be constructed on Ricardo Building side of the building. It's phased in power blocks, and there are currently three block designs. So it'll be three 500-ton chillers. The chillers are a closed-loop system, so no open cooling towers. It's all a closed-loop system.
So you mentioned that it's air-cooled as well. What is the expected energy draw?
This expansion was originally scheduled to be three megawatts. After our MLS review with DTE, DTE is only able to provide us two megawatts from the Zachary Substation.
Will any of the water that you're using be drawn from or discharged into Belleville or Edison Lake?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
So there's three transformers and three generators. Will the facility be paying for all of those installation fees and then all future upgrades? Okay, so DT won't pay a dime for this?
DTE, the, correct. Right now, the way the service comes into the facility is that it comes in at 13/2 primary voltage. That's where it's metered at. Everything on the secondary side of the meter is U.S. Signal's responsibility.
Okay, so the actual infrastructure you guys are providing, DT won't have to pay for that?
The original construction was sized for this expansion.
Okay. Yep, me answer that. So will, is there a guarantee from you guys that local residents' water and electric rates will not be affected?
I cannot answer that question with utility. I don't know.
Okay. What about water pressure?
I cannot answer that either. I mean, right now, we're sized. We probably will not use any more domestic water on a regular basis outside of the normal utility usage. And once the chilled water system is full, the secondary side of the chilled water system is a closed-loop system. So all that will stay in there. There's no evaporation. We don't have any open cooling towers. The regular water consumption would be just through regular use as a normal building would have.
So it's a closed loop. How many gallons of water would need to be, to charge that? And then how often would it need to be recharged?
I cannot answer the total gallons of the system. We can provide that. I don't know off the top of my head. And then it does not get recharged. The water gets treated. So there's a makeup water tank that'll add supplemental. But with it being a closed-loop system, there's no loss through evaporation. Mainly comes from some humidification control, but for the most part, it won't get recharged.
Is there any, let me backtrack, sorry. Are there any additives to that water?
There are some additives that go into the water, yes.
Like glycol, antifreeze, stuff like that?
Well, yes, correct. Since the chillers are exterior, the primary makeup of the secondary side of it is glycol.
Okay, so there is evaporation. When that water evaporates, it leads a more concentrated version of that glycol or antifreeze?
Well, glycol is not antifreeze.
Yeah, glycol or antifreeze.
Yeah, so this is polyethylene glycol is what will be used. And there's really not evaporation on the secondary side of the closed-loop system.
And then I think I know the answer based off of the power draw, but is this considered hyperscale?
It is not.
Okay. When was this first, the first facility, or first center at this facility built? And then how has the technology changed since then? Getting at, what's the lifespan here? How long for this technology to become obsolete?
Wish I could answer that question. I don't know the obsolete. I mean, things change on a regular basis. The original facility was built as a co-location facility. So when you look at density per cabinet, it was, you know, 2 to 3 kilowatts per cabinet. Right now, this space is sized for, I think we're at 7 kW per cabinet. So equipment densities have increased, but it's nothing near the hyperscale level, you know, which those cabinets can exceed 100 kW per cabinet.
Is your company the end user?
We are not the end user.
Okay. Would it be transferred or sold to an end user?
It is not. U.S. Signal, who is building it, is the end user. And it's co-location space, so they lease space within the data center to other tenants.
Okay. And then my very last question, I apologize, I know that went on. What's the community benefit here? What does the community get from this?
That's a good question, too.
Not adding parking spaces. My concern is that we're not adding any jobs, but we're increasing the burden on our community through power, through water, through frequencies that we don't fully understand yet. I've done a lot of research on those. I guess that that's my concern is that there's
From my perspective as a design builder, our short-term return on the community is jobs, right? For the construction of the project, local contractors, from the surrounding communities, is our initial impact to it. As far as U.S. Signal goes, I mean, they will add positions to it. But as we stated here, data centers are not a large employee draw, but they are technical employees that will be part of it. So you're bringing those types of higher-paying jobs into the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
You're fine. Very good.
Through the chair, just want to add, piggyback onto one of the previous. You mentioned two megawatts? Is that for the expansion only?
The existing data center is two megawatts.
So it's four.
So it'll be a total of four.
Where did you say, where did you say you think hyperscale maybe begins as far as the energy consumption?
Typically, you see, it can be as low as 20 megawatts. Typically, it's 30 and above.
Go ahead.
So I just want to make some comments, I mean, through the, through the chair. With regard to, through the McKenna, the McKenna ladder, I would agree with, I mean, primarily with a lot of the equipment that's sitting out on site. A lot of it is exposed and actually currently, yeah, you can see the generators is pretty evident. So coming back with a, you know, a ballot or proper screening method would be much appreciated for sure. And I don't know if that's, if that's solely a landscape-related thing because obviously you have winters that are longer than summers. So that would, that would be in play or if it's some type of architectural screening. And the reason why I ask that is because an architectural screening might help with the long facade on the Ricardo side because there is a lot of equipment there and the equipment on its own breaks the facade, but not in the kind of way we want it to, right? So that's why I asked the question.
It is under the zoning ordinance section 10.103, which is landscaping. But this specific section where it says mechanical equipment screening doesn't say it has to be just landscaping because, like you said, landscaping might not be year-round and screening is required year-round. So I think the planning commission can make it a mix of both, one or the other.
So the other thing too as well, I noticed it doesn't appear on the elevations, but I think it's shown on the plan is there's roof screening. Is there equipment on the roof of substantial size?
There's some mechanical equipment on the roof, correct.
Is it exhaust-type fans?
It is not exhaust fan. It is condensing units.
Okay, so they're not the size of them roughly?
I would say that they are four feet wide by 8 to 10 feet long.
But they require some level of screening if all right?
Beautifully, under the architectural thing, they have to be screened from view.
And I do want to raise a question about the south facade. I know you made a note that, you know, the future expansion will cover it. But when is the future expansion?
Good point.
So the thing is, I think you have to treat it like it's a final facade until that expansion actually occurs. So I would think that your comment about the long facade and the breakup of that, I guess we'll leave it up to the applicant, but I think that should apply as well.
And to answer the question about the future expansion, that is driven primarily by power availability. So given that Zachary Substation doesn't have any available power to provide us, if DT would be willing to give us an additional service from a second substation, that would be the reason to drive the phase four expansion.
So you're saying that if another substation is built in the area, that then you may be able to draw power from that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Going to your point, Commissioner Grant, so that is an unknown timeline if and when DT constructs. So for all means and purposes, we can assume the south facade is going to be the final facade, so
Sure.
Attention.
I agree with that.
Ms. Chair, can I ask clarification on that? Does that mean that there, there is no phase four proposed in this update? Like phase four is just, that's way in the future or it's not?
Yes, I, I was very clear. Phase four is no part of this review or approval. They will have to come back if and when they have a phase four because they have no timeline for it at all.
Okay, right, right. Okay, I see. So any, any, we shouldn't be planning for phase four in this. That's all, that's all we're talking about here.
Right.
Ms. Chair, I have a question for the applicant if I could. How, about how many cabinets are in the, planned to be in the expanded facility?
A total of 360. It'll all have 180. It's 5,100 square feet. Day two will be 4,900 square feet with another 180 cabinets.
How many megawatts can your total number of gen sets produce?
They are two and a half megawatt generators. The site's configured in what we call an R-block. So there's a primary A and B phase, and each of those A and B is blacked up by the R. So that's why there's three sets. So at any given time, two of them will be operational.
So generation capacity at any one times four megawatts?
Correct.
Okay. We don't have information on exactly what the gen sets are right now. You have two gen sets existing presumably right now, one for the first phase, one for the other. What's, now, I'm sure that it, the noise, you know, we've got screening requirements, but we also have noise requirements. Is the existing, I'm sure we must have checked it out and made sure that the existing gen sets are under the existing noise constraint for the site, that the sound at the property line is compliant. I'm curious if there will be an issue with sound compliance once the number of generators has doubled? So can you have four total generators or six?
We have a total, there's three at the facility right now.
Three.
We'd be adding three.
So Commissioner Jar, when the site plan was originally approved in 2019, it was just presented as generators. We assumed it as the standard generator and the site has to comply with the noise ordinance. That said, now we know cumulative of multiple generators, sound generated is different. So the planning commission, if that is a concern, you would be well within the requirements of site plan to require a noise study to find out what the cumulative noise generated would be. Because I don't have an answer to that, that what happens when all of the generators are on at the same time? What kind of noise does it make? Because the current site is compliant with the noise ordinance because there have been no noise complaints. But what happens when all of them comes, that's
That there are no complaints doesn't mean it's compliant, but I understand what you're saying. I don't think it's a problem. I wouldn't have expected it to be a problem. I only am concerned that as we double the amount of generators on site, it's, I mean, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney and I'm not an acoustical engineer, but it seems like doubling the noise. So I don't know that we necessarily would need a formal sound study unless we look at the specs for the machine. The generator should come with noise specifications.
Correct. They come with sound attenuation data that you can have at various distances from the equipment will give you the necessary DBs of that.
I think, I think to add on to what you're, I think I would request that they make it clear what the sound levels are at property line.
Are expected to be at the property line and that they are, demonstrate compliance with the noise levels along with the screening. I think that's a, I think it's a good idea.
Whether that's a noise study, you have an engineer in your office that can verify that and put it in writing somehow somewhere, I think.
I mean, much like, I feel like I'm going into discussion mode, but a lot like a lighting, like a, like a lighting plan, right? Show us a noise plan similar to the, to the lighting plan.
Be a very reasonable request to add in as a condition. I mean, the generator, individual generator specs might show the decibel levels at the property line, but if three generators are on at the same time, is the noise level at the property line? So that information probably the manufacturer can provide, but it's, it's a reasonable request to ask for.
The fire marshal asked about, in the letter stated that there was, that all the fuel tanks in, in aggregate over 1,000 needed to have environmental or catch basins. Do the current generator tanks have that or is that, they do?
They're double-wall interstitial spaces.
They're double-wall generators, okay. So that would show up on the plan when we get the technical specifications for the equipment. It will show for the fire marshal to be able to look at and circle and say, oh, yeah, it's double-walled. It conforms, okay. It's a code requirement. Okay, great. And it will be on the plan, super. And the total tonnage of air conditioning with this new phase is expected to be three, 1,500 tons of AC?
1,500 tons, correct. Keep in mind, that is in an N-plus-one configuration. So that way you have two primary, basically 1,000 tons is your primary. If one of those units fails, the third one is the redundant one for you.
Oh, got it. So they won't all be running at the same time. My noise question was, the engineer correctly anticipated my question, which is
They will all run at the same time, but they will not all run at 100%.
100% load.
They will run at reduced capacity unless there's a failure, then that one comes off, the other two come off.
Okay. The Mr. Lepick, you asked for a better utilities diagram because the utilities were, I guess you said were difficult to decode. Did you mean utilities for electric, water, sewer, including all backup generators? Anything that could be a utility or did you have something specific in mind?
I specifically meant site domestic utilities, water service, the water, existing water main public loop I specifically meant site domestic utilities, water service, the water, existing water main public loop that's on-site, and the sanitary service. I did not reference the, any of the mechanical equipment or generators or electrical.
Would that be something, the, the, the specific onsite equipment, generators and electrical, is that something that you would review normally? Or would you leave that to, would that not be part of a normal Van Buren Township engineering review?
Yeah, we, we do not typically deal with those private onsite utilities. Yeah, that's a building, we deal with the pri, uh, public sanitary and water utilities and stormwater management.
Got it, I have another question and then I'll make a comment. Because I'm getting hoarse. On the previous plan where we had, it was phased out, the original building, and then Phase Two, and then Phase Three, and then Phase Four, the building was growing to the east. Now it's one building that's right on the north wall, and there was a concern about what does the north wall look like? Is it just a barren, you know, empty expanse of preformed concrete? My question is, when we approved, and I don't know the answer, because I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me, but when we approved the previous plan with the phasing, what was our requirement for breaking up the wall as the phases came in? Did we have a requirement? I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I don't remember, so if we don't remember, it's something we should look up.
I don't recollect. I, I do remember distinctly the planning commission focused on the facade that was visible from Hagerty Road and Tyler Road the front. I do not recollect off the top of my head what we had determined for the future facades.
Okay, I, I'm in agreement with, uh, breaking up that facade. It doesn't have to have windows, you know, but it, it should have something architectural that makes it, I understand it's a building for robots, that's right. But the people drive by it, and we, we have neighbors who look across the property, and, you know, I don't want to, I, I know, I personally don't like looking at large concrete bunkers.
Let me ask a question to the group here, is that, given the fact that on that Ricardo Drive side primarily, there's most of the mechanical, electrical, private infrastructures located on that side. So I don't think there's much benefit into addressing it at the physical building facade, because you're not going to see it, it's going to be broken up. I think it would be better addressed through architectural screening of that equipment yard in order to give you that relief.
That's what a three-D visual or a colored rendering will help us see. If the building is going to entirely be covered by your architectural screens, then that solves the problem, but we need to see what the screening is exactly.
I could be convinced by a picture.
Yeah.
A good, a good picture, but I, I could be convinced by a picture. You know, and then I promised you a comment. I think you've been a good, a good neighbor in Van Buren Township, the building's good. I agree that it really doesn't use a lot of parking. I drive past the building a lot, I see how much parking is in use, it's not much, it's a data center. And I, I have previous professional experience in data centers. So I, I, I know that it is a building for robots, and, and they're human minders, and there aren't very many of those. And that said, I, I think that we put a lot of effort into making sure that the phase, the phased growth plan was good the first time we saw this. The phase plan has changed, but I don't think it really changes my opinion of whether or not this data center should be expanded. It's not hyperscale, it's a small, compact data center, and I think it, it really turned out well. I am even grudgingly willing to admit that the security fence that we went back and forth on many times, yeah, I'll say it's not bad. So, so, so I think you, it's not bad. So yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the approving preliminary on this, of course, with the, you know, the conditions, and some pictures and some noise studies, but I believe that we're well on the way to having it approved.
And I'd like to add to that, because I know you mentioned it, but that I think we're in agreement to set over the parking reduction.
Yeah. Part of the problem with a parking reduction is that it really does limit how a building could be reused. Like if it was a office space, billing office space use has a certain amount of parking requirement. Stores have a certain amount of parking requirement, but repurposing a data center into an office, a real office space, when the building's got no windows, or to a store, when it doesn't really have good frontage on a road, is really not something that we would expect a data center to be repurposed into, as long as there's still some free land to put a parking lot, should that eventuality occur. I don't see any reason to provide a lot more impervious surface for parking lots that won't get used. It's my opinion. So there's a long way of saying, yeah, I think the parking lot reduction's okay.
Clarification? The applicant is going to show on the north facade that with equipment screening, maybe facade relief. What about the south facade, which Phase Four?
I think you mentioned that, didn't you?
I think, I, I think, I think both would be something to bring up.
Pictures of both? You might have to put in more relief on the south facade, because you have that open grassy area next to it, so.
Because the south facade, we're not adding any additional private infrastructure for that, what is there is going to remain, because it's planned for potentially a future Phase Four.
The planning commission would like you to decide like this is the phase, because we have no idea if and when Phase Four will come. So you probably have to design it in a manner where a future phase, if added, would still make your building functional, but for all means and purposes, it'd look like a fully finished building.
And if I can make one more clarification, the, the east wall of the building I'm less concerned with, with the rest of the equipment. It's, it's a, it's a budding, another, another, you know, industrial area. You can't see it when you're driving down Hagerty Road.
And there is a pretty substantial green belt between the two properties, too, which is heavily, so it is well-screened.
Yeah. I don't think I have any more questions.
Through the chair. I just want to add, I do appreciate you guys answering my questions, but I, I do need to say, before we get in any further, that I still do have serious concerns about this project. I do think that the burden that it could provide is, will outweigh some of the benefit that would come to the community, so I will, I will be voting no.
Say that I do agree with you that the amount of resources that a very large data center produces is certainly something that we should take pause and take time to look at. You know, it can have a big effect on our local utilities, our local water, but this is, this is not a very large data center. And this is a data center that we looked at and, and planned, it's closed loop. It's not pulling its water directly from the ground, it's not depleting, you know, the aquifer. It is not blowing steam in the air through evaporative cooling. It's not, it's not the heavily industrialized style of data centers that we're seeing proposed in neighboring communities. It's a business that's taken time to grow intelligently, they built out in phases. They're adding on not the entire phase, they're not looking at it as, boy, we have to build as big and as fast as we possibly can. They're building a smaller phase that they can, that they can support with the existing utility. They're not asking for a new substation to go in. If it became available, I think the applicant indicated that they'd, they'd be willing to, willing to take use of that, but it's not there now, and they're, they're obviously not trying to bring in their own full-time generators. Just to be clear, the generators are backup generators, right? Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, they're, they're backup, they're not, they're not doing onsite power generation. I feel that there is a difference between this size data center and something that would be deployed on a multiple hundred, hundred-acre site. This is also across the street from a very large data center. We don't think about it as being a data center, but the, the financial processing institution next door, it's a data center, it's the same thing. And, you know, this isn't the first data center we've had, it's maybe the second that I can think of. But at this scale, I'm not concerned about this data center. I'm with you that data centers in general have a serious capacity problem. If, I look at this as maybe being the difference between one store being built on a lot and someone proposing a giant strip mall being built from a land use issue. A big strip mall out, out on a four-hundred-acre parcel might not be such a great idea, but a single, a single store running a single business at, at a small scale that can't really grow beyond its existing land size, I feel that it is within the, the rights of the property owner to be able to, to build it. We should absolutely be looking at our ordinances with regard to large-scale industrialized data center, because anytime you start talking about onsite power generation, or how tall do the smokestacks need to be to dissipate the steam? Or how are we going to mitigate the noise from forty-five generators? Or a nuclear plant, I don't know if that's, first I heard about that, but, you know, it's, boy, that's, that's something we need to think about. That really is something we need to think about. But one small data center that we'd already approved in a phased manner, I feel like this one is within the realms of reasonability. It's my opinion, and I, I understand, I understand that commissioners can differ on this, and I respect your opinion on it, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah.
Through the chair, I, I'll just add on to that. I think that, I think the public raised a great question earlier in maybe adding to your comments and yours as well is that there's a difference between, I consider this to be small-scale data center compared to a hyperscale one, and the impacts. Now, you brought up some issues related to data centers, but you applied those to a small-scale one, and you're concerned that you would vote down even a small scale. Now, how would you apply that to a hyperscale?
Same, exactly. But it's a, it poses an undue burden to the community.
And, and sort of a, a very large perspective.
A very large burden on the community.
And that this is small, and your concerns aren't a small one, imagine that they, what they would be on a hyperscale version.
Fully aware, I've been researching these for months and months, I am fully aware of what the concerns are.
In some respects, I agree, because of the size and the scale of this, and the fact that, you know, it was talked through before. I think that it's bound, it's bound by a small lot, it does, it won't go beyond what it, it, you know, even the expansion's questionable that it'll even go beyond that because of the power draw.
Or when the bubble bursts.
But I think for what it is now, I mean, they're not going up. I mean, the scale of it from the road, I think it's, it's reasonable, I think it's well landscaped from the road. I think that if they attend to the north and the south facades properly and screen the equipment, other than the impact on the energy side of it, I think that it would sit well where it's at. I mean, it's not surrounded by residential, there is a couple houses across on Ricardo Drive, but beyond that, it's, you know, there's an open field, you know, next to the community college, and then there's Ricardo to the east. You know, and in referencing the data center across the street from it, which has been a longstanding building, it's been there a long time. The interesting thing about that is it's so far set back, and the scale of it is so small, you don't even really notice it as much. So it's kind of blends in, and it just sits way back, it doesn't really impact much around it. I know there's some, just a small strip of housing adjacent to it, you know, they've been, been there a long time, but I, you know, which probably has some impact on them, but overall, I think it's, it just sits there. And now if you try to repeat that again in another location, it might be a different story, closer to the residential. So I, I think I would support this. I'd have big concerns like you do on a hyperscale version, like big, big concerns. But for this one, I think, I, I appreciate your comments and understanding of, you know, what, what those concerns are, but.
If this was a brand-new data center of even this scale, I would have concerns, I would think, gee, we have a lot, in much the same way that we talk about, are there too many car washes or gas stations? You know, we, we run into the same thing with, with a data center, are there too many of them in our area? But again, this is an exact, this is an expansion of an existing one, and I, I feel like that makes, makes a difference. And I, I also want to say, much like Ms. Krishnan pointed out, I want to talk about this pond, since we had an action, I had an item earlier with a pond problem, I want to talk about the pond, I want to talk about tech bubbles. We had an action item earlier in the meeting about an energy company that had really big-scale plans, that unfortunately, the, as sometimes happens in, in technology expansion, it didn't work out the way and at the scale that they really hoped that it would. And now here we are, several years later, spending an inordinate amount of time discussing an ordinance change for a battery manufacturing facility that frankly, isn't, isn't going to buy the, or isn't going to move into the whole building. It's not going to expand the way that they had hoped, which is why I feel that if this data center had come to us with, hey, guess what, we're building phases three, and, two and three and four, and we want to stick a second floor on there, and we're going to do Phase Five, and, oh boy, we're putting generators on-site to run at twenty-four hours, I would look at that and say, gee, that seems like a kind of a bubbly economy thing. What's going to happen when that doesn't pan out for you? But this seems like a reasonable expansion, a reasonable expansion of an existing use, to me. And I, I just hope you appreciate that were a new one to come in front of me, I'd, I would absolutely weigh it on its individual merits, regardless of its size. But I, I think that for my personal opinion on this data, data center, the fact that it is an expansion, and that it is only a partial expansion, says good things about the plan, at least in my mind. It probably is not going to become a burden on, on the township, should it, should it, gee, we hope it doesn't fail for you. I hope it's, I wish you nothing but the, nothing but the best, but as we see, sometimes the best-laid plans don't, don't work out, and then we're left with the fallout at the, at the township level. So I, I'm in favor of granting this preliminary, this preliminary expansion, is my feeling on it, that's why.
And anybody else? Comments? And my feeling is, is that it seems to me that they have planned this, that it's, they wouldn't have expanded if they didn't feel they needed that level of expansion, that they've proven themselves through Phase One, and that they need Phase Two and Phase Three, which is part of their plan, even though it was back in nineteen, and this is six years later. They're seeing that some of that is coming, they're taking their time with it. It's not like they're, like you have made, mentioned of a bubble, where it's all of a sudden, they're going to blow big, and then it blows. But, I mean, going up or something of that nature, so.
For me, the approval would be small-scale, they're, they can't go beyond the bounds of what they originally established, you know, in their phasing, it's limited. They can't go up, they can't go further out. They would have to buy Ricardo, and that's a whole different animal. In this case, as it stays small, it's, for me, it's the scale. And the fact that they've been here, you know what their limits are. I think from that perspective, being small in, in the area has less impact than something that's going to be hyperscale.
Yes. Anybody from the public, comments? Thank you, by the way.
I'm Ken Kerkowski. He said he was going to use glycol, so that's a hazardous material, how is that going to be addressed? There might be something for you, as well as the HVAC system. That creates noise, as you hear when it kicks on here, that they're using that. Not only the generators as a backup, but if they need four megawatts and they only provide two from DTE, how are they getting the other? We need to make sure that those generators aren't running all the time, that they're only phased when the power's out. Not as a, we need four megawatts, so we're going to run the generators today. And when all of them are running, and HVAC, what is the new noise pollution? And as the generators get older, making sure that the mufflers or the sound system in, in a year from now doesn't increase, those are my concerns, and it should be for the board, because, you know, today is one thing, when everything's new. But a year from now, or they start running everything, the HVACs are working, the generators are running, because we need to pull more power, because we're not supplied enough, in the summertime especially, what type of noise, what's that have effect on us?
Can I ask you a question? Whereabouts do you live?
On Alden Road in Hagerty.
In Hagerty?
Nine ninety-four Service Drive.
Okay, I was, my question about this is, is were you close enough to hear what the noise level is with what they have now?
No, I drive by there, wouldn't even notice it, you know, and I've been by there, we noticed it before. But my, you know, as they're adding HVAC, glycol, how much is that going to affect, you know, hazardous material? As well as if they're running more generators, and like you said, if they're only providing this much, and all of a sudden the data center expands and we need more power, well, we're going to run them. Well, we're running them only when we need to, but we need to now, because we're not getting enough power. Well, that's not as a backup, that's a backup to you need more power, not as a backup as we lost power in the city.
No, I understand, I was trying to get an idea, if you were living close by, what did you hear from that?
I didn't know that that was, I knew the other one across the street, we drove by there a bunch of times, and nice building, nice facade, they did a great job. But those are some concerns that I have for the township as well as, you know, other. are some concerns that I have for the township as well as, you know, other communities.
I understand, and I appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we ask staff to, the fire marshal isn't here. Could we ask staff to ask the fire marshal if there are any fire or hazardous material codes around closed cir, closed, closed-loop cooling with antifreeze? You know, if there's a lot of gallons in it. I don't, we don't have the full equipment specs. We don't know how many gallons we're talking about, that the fire marshal should probably address whether or not there's any applicable hazard, hazardous material handling.
And I would agree to pick you back on that, too, is because the glycol's an open pipe that's outside the building?
No, glycol, it's only acting glycol, it's considered nonviolent. It's a closed-loop pipe system that is the main liquid that is used, that comes inside the outside.
But it goes outside the building to the units and comes back in, right? Which means if there's a pipe burst outside the building, it goes up to the grade unless it's contained into a shallow catch area, right? So, that would be a code-related issue.
And I think we should...
Just going into groundwater, yeah.
Anybody else? Sure. And again, please, we know who you are, but could you please identify yourself?
Kirkowski, also on Alden Road, you know. So, facing that hyperscale data center. And so, precedence means a lot, right? So, first I have to ask a question. I understand that that data center is small, but it's, it's zoned as an office space? Can somebody educate me on that?
The site is zoned office technology. So...
Know the difference.
Okay. So, just office district, we, in our zoning designation, we don't have a purely office district. We have only office technology. That's the one district we have. The office technology is intended for uses such as these, when it was written, data centers, computer processing centers, credit card processing centers, anything that was to do with data and technology. It is not intended for standalone office uses like medical office uses or real estate offices. Those are in our commercial district. So, this site and this area was, if you remember the history of this area where Verizon is located, Grace Lake Estates, that's where first office technology uses and all started from, from that site. And then this portion of the township is where the office technology is predominantly located. So, the use that they're proposing is what this district was written for. But like you previously stated, what the scope of these uses was when these ordinances were written versus what they have grown into, like this new term hyperscale. This is relatively new, right? Data centers are data centers, like the facility that is across the street from US Signals. It's been there forever, at least, at least 25 years, to my knowledge, been around here that long, and I know it's always been there. Nobody even notices. It's just there. It's an office building. Few people go in there.
I didn't know it was either.
Yeah.
But, but now we know differently, right? And, and I'm going to go back to my point that precedence means a lot. Is there a point where they outgrow it, being an office technologies zone? Is that, is that fit as they grow?
Zoning is established. You don't, you don't outgrow zoning. All land use under, there are two state acts that govern all of planning. One is the Planning Enabling Act, and the other is Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Under the auspices of both those acts is the Planning Commission's formation, setting up zoning ordinance, all of it set up. And under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, it requires that a municipality is divided into various zones, and the land uses for each one of these zones is defined. So, this site will have to remain some zoning designation. So, I don't know if your question is change it from office technology to something else. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, but such a change cannot be done without first changing the master plan. And the master plan cannot be changed wholesale to make an entire area non-conforming. Non-conforming means the use was legal when it was established, but you changed the zoning from under it, and now it doesn't meet the ordinance requirements. So, a lot goes in before you can change the zoning of an area. You have to go back to the master plan because the master plan, zoning ordinance is the law. The master plan is the policy document. The policy document dictates how the township would like to see its various areas developed. And this area in the master plan is identified as office technology right now. But like the chairman said, under state law, the master plan needs to be revisited every five years to be updated as necessary, or if you feel it is not relevant, rewritten in its entirety. So, the township's master plan will be coming up for revisiting, at which time all of these areas can be revisited.
So, I appreciate that. So, I've heard a lot of comments that we've had data centers in our area. There's no harm in a hyperscale, and that's why I bring up precedence, that people need to understand the difference between a four-megawatt and a 1.4 gigawatt. And I don't think people, if you can say that it's the same, it's like saying an ant is similar to a lion. And so, it's the perception in the community that I want to make clear. I'm against data centers as a whole, as he mentioned, as a whole. And so, that unfortunately throws them under that same bucket because it is a precedent setting. If it's okay for one, it's not a, you know, it shouldn't be okay for another. Then, to say that there's only one circle of residents, if I were in that circle, I'd be pretty darn sad that I heard that because I am somewhere and I am affected. So, never underestimate that one person that lives there because that's, that's an important person. Then, I heard a couple of I-don't-knows and I'm-not-shoes, and I think those should be buttoned up before we go any further. So, the big ones that I heard, is that ever going to go into Edison Lake or Bellevue Lake? I would have assumed never. It's too far away. That makes no sense. But it was an I-don't-know. So, that, that doesn't sit well with me. And then, the I'm-not-shoes. So, those poor saps that live in that area, and then us otherwise, the answer to the question, will that cause the utilities of the people in that area to go up? I don't know. I'm not sure. Those things should be studied before this is ever approved, for sure. Then I have one other question. So, a closed loop, and I'm, I'm not an expert at all, but there's some draw-off that happens, right? Like, you have to test the waters. You have to do some chemical checking. And so, that draw-off, where is it going and how is it monitored? I said one more, but another. And then, pollution in the area. If those are diesel generators, by what standard is pollution, not only noise and light and sound, but air pollution? Where is that in the equation? Because that's why I worry about it being an office use, and those generators do not fit like that in office use. So, where is the air pollution quality standards?
The zoning ordinance, thank you for that. The zoning ordinance provisions where we have this environmental performance standards, that is got for noise, air, water, nuisance, zoning code enforcement, all of those standards are in the zoning ordinance. And I believe there are some air quality standards also in there.
I believe, but no.
I'm sorry?
She's asking you to check.
I'm not sure. Is there, I believe.
Evidence.
Absolutely, absolutely. I was just answering your question of do we have it in our ordinance. And just under the small, just for general knowledge purposes in planning and zoning, I know the concern about data centers is now front and center. That said, under state law, a lawful land use cannot be excluded. So, if, you cannot write a zoning ordinance that completely prohibits a use if it's a lawful land use. That situation came about a few years ago when we had those, what is it? Oil, oil drilling. When, when the oil drilling thing came and the gas wind turbine energy...
Clean energy.
Clean energy came. So, some municipality said, we don't want to have anything to do with drilling for oil and all that. Some municipalities actually got sued for that because under state said, it's a lawful and valid land use. You've got to provide for it somewhere. That said, it shouldn't have to be provided everywhere, but you have to make accommodations for it. So, our ordinance, when it was written, anticipated data centers on a smaller scale like US Signals. I mean, it's, it's a small one. It was, nobody knew the technology can grow to what extent it has grown right now. So, the Planning Commission can definitely revisit the ordinance and see what can be done in order to recognize that maybe new definitions needed to be added in order to classify these into various categories. So, everybody's not clubbed into one category as data center. The only challenge with that is you cannot retroactively apply any ordinance to any application that is already in process. They have to go under what the current ordinance standards is. So, that, that's where the challenge is. You can plan for the future, but you cannot, once an applicant has applied for a petition, you cannot adopt a new ordinance and make them subject to it.
Even if you learn new information that it's so unsafe to the population? And I'm saying precedent setting, please.
Yes. You cannot change an ordinance while an application is in process and retroactively apply it to that application irrespective of what...
Learn that it's dangerous.
That is the innate nature of land use planning. You, you become aware of new uses. You become aware of growth of uses and its impacts, and you plan. You start putting safeguards in. For instance, recently, the Planning Commission and the Township Board adopted an ordinance to restrict gas stations because...
I heard that, yes.
Yes, because, okay, one gas station came, another, and suddenly we are like, just how many gas stations is too much? We already had two in process. We have put in separation requirements, but while the application, applications were active, the Planning Commission couldn't retroactively go. If those applications had come after the ordinance was adopted, neither one would have been able to go in where they went in.
I mean, what I'm talking about is slightly different. What I'm saying is if you're educated now to know that it's dangerous to the public, and there is an ordinance that doesn't account for that, if you don't look at it, and maybe it takes legal counsel to do that, it's reckless to the community.
There is a lot of land use law that goes in, which tries to balance between protection of individual property owners' rights, residents' rights, and how far a municipality can go. You're right. There is a lot of legal ground to cover over there. I'm not going to be able to cover it in explaining, but I completely understand your concerns. I totally hear where you're coming from, and I think the Planning Commission does, too. In some situations, it's just that a situation has now appeared. They've got to deal with it to put safeguards in for the future, but try to see what can be done under the current ordinance standards to protect the residents.
I'm from the medical world, and there's a saying that everybody should keep in mind. Above all else, do no harm. And if that is your working motto, we've been successful.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, could I address one point that Ms. Kirkowski made that I thought was a good thing for us to consider? She asked if, is there any time at which this data center outgrows the office technology district? And that's a good point. I know that we have overlaid districts, districts where we allow craft businesses, like I think, what's the leatherworking? Somebody wanted to make wallets or boots. A crafts person could, in a, in a mixed-use district, do a small craft-style leatherworking facility. But if they were producing a million boots a week at an industrial scale, that wouldn't qualify for the crafts person business. It would, at that point, be a heavy manufacturing. So, there, there is some cases where a manufacturing use or, or a use can grow to the point where it does have a higher impact on the land use. And we're here to deal with land use issues, protecting the land and the population. And at a certain point, although maybe we didn't think about it 10, five years ago, that a data center could potentially grow to the size that it has the same land impact as a Honda plant, or, not to pick on Honda, I apologize, but you know, a man, a large automotive manufacturing plant. I know, I didn't really expect that. I know they get pretty big, and I know they could use megawatts of power, but a 400, 300, 100-acre data center, that isn't really a craft activity. That isn't even a small business. That's starting to get into industrial scale. And our zoning code does make some concessions for when a business is small. It's acceptable. But when it's at an industrial scale, other concerns come into play, and they need to be looked at. We don't have that now for data centers, I don't believe. I don't think anything we have now has it. But when we are looking at it, and I believe we'll be looking at the ordinances in the future, that is something that I believe Ms. Kirkowski brought up and is a salient point that we should consider when we're going over the ordinance. And also, I did want to say, Mr. Kirkowski, the glycol question, we'll, we'll figure out what the ordinances are, are around there. I believe we have good environmental ordinances in the township. It's probably covered. And I'm not going to say I don't know, but I will say, we'll, we'll find out. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You are welcome.
Am I allowed to ask a question to the applicant about something that was just brought up?
Sure.
Clarifying more than anything. Are they diesel generators?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment. Another comment to your do no harm. You know, we all live here. I don't want any harm to anything that I do.
Because of the air conditioning.
It's very hard. I mean, we all live here. I don't want to harm you any more than I want to harm me. My family members all live here. We all care very much, and we're very concerned with what the township looks like. That's why we try to keep our ordinances updated so that we can do no harm to anybody, and yet we are welcoming some things. 60 years ago, when I moved here, it was mostly all farmland. So, I've seen a lot of changes. Some I didn't like, but some, some, they were all done with the same thing to make the community what it is.
I'm sorry.
Long is it short?
It's going to be very short. I've been awake for Friday, right? This is eating me alive. I don't assume that any one of you, as humans, are expecting to do harm, right? I don't expect that. But what I, what I cannot live with is if we learn new information, we're going to stick with our rules and hold our guns, and we'll fix it next time. I don't live by that philosophy. I live by, if I'm making a medical mistake, I see it. I own it. I change it.
That's what we're here. I, I'm looking at the rest that is here. I, Ms. Bud moved in here 60 years ago. My family came to this community back in the early 1900s. And I got on the commission because I care about this community. But I also know that there are certain things that we are limited to, limited in what we can do and what we can stop. And unfortunately, there are some things that, yes, we pass that we don't necessarily like because we're bound by law.
Then go back and get it legally reviewed with the new standards and new education.
We try to adopt our ordinances so that we do restrict or create those stoppages, but we can't foresee every possible thing. And we, we've been caught on a couple where, oh, jeez, we've got this coming in. Okay, the application's filed. We've got to deal with it, but we're placing a mor, we asked the board to place a moratorium on future expansion in that area. As we take and readjust our ordinances to, and the gas stations is, was a classic example. So, we try to do and foresee what we can do, but we can't foresee everything, unfortunately. We wish we had the crystal ball and could foresee a problem that's coming. That's why we have a variety of people here that, when we do look at ordinances and start, we try to foresee all possible avenues that could attack that ordinance and do something to it that we weren't expecting and prevent that, prevent it from happening.
Not even again, but maybe you could prevent it from happening at all. Yeah. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, we do have this item. Do we have any druthers on what to do forward?
Ms. Chairman, I want to point out that a preliminary site plan approval is not the same thing as a final site plan approval. A preliminary site plan approval means that the applicant has provided enough information in the right direction that we feel it is okay for them to go out and answer the questions that are remaining, and to fill in the blanks, and to bring back answers to the questions that were asked, and to update the plans to show precisely what it is they are doing. I will say it again because it's important. A preliminary site plan approval is not final approval. If, when the application comes back for final approval, there is new information, or clearly the design isn't going to work due to noise or environmental, they will not, we, we would not be able to grant them a final site plan approval. That being said, I feel that the applicant has met the burden... final site plan approval. That being said, I feel that the applicant has met the burden of presenting us with a plan that, while not complete and certainly not final, has enough merit to send the, send the applicant back to clean up the plan, answer the unanswered questions, fill in the blanks, and continue with their development. I would be willing to make a motion to grant the preliminary site plan approval based on those, those merits. If other members of the commission aren't in support of that, and and you guys really don't want to support it, I'd appreciate you saying so, so that I don't make a long-winded motion only to find out that I have no support for it.
I would support your move.
Again, I think that, I mean, the fact is that, but 2019, I wasn't here for that, but the fact is that there, it was approved back then and the phasing, which, again, it maximizes itself on the site. It can't grow beyond that. The fact that it is considered small scale and that its impact on the community is probably very small, if any. Based on the description of the systems being used, I mean, most of it's self-contained. It's not going to be, you know, leaching out into the environment based on what we've been told. And again, just based on the scale of it and the, the fact that it's truly not going to have much of an impact, it's not a hyperscale, which is a whole different animal. I would agree. I would support that, this. I mean, and it only finishes out with a small addition left, but they don't, they may not even have the power to do it anyway. So I would agree with you.
Would the Commissioner like to make the motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
At this time, and for the reasons previously stated, I am moving to grant the applicant U.S. Signal preliminary site plan approval to continue their phased construction of the data center located at 9275 Hagerty Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna letter dated 6th of December 2025, the Fishback Engineering Letter dated 3 December 2025, the Van Buren Township Fire Report dated 25 November 2025, and noting specifically the feedback and concern of the public that were raised here this evening, in particular with regard to finding out environmental codes around diesel air pollution, glycol containment, and noise, a noise study should be enacted. And I feel that I'm missing one.
Pictures of the north and south facades?
Yes, and the the next, the applicant shall provide pictures of the facades to, you know, provide pictures of the facades, and that we would like a statement from the, from the applicant to indicate that the generators are intended for backup and emergency use. They are not designed for full-time operation. Any Commissioner had another item that I feel that they feel I missed in preparation for the final site plan review, please, I'd take it up. Oh, noting also that I believe that the the request from the applicant to not add additional parking spaces is acceptable. I open it to support or discussion?
Support, unless.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you also like the applicant to provide clarification regarding the question about anything going to Belleville Lake or Addison Lake? There were two questions asked.
Absolutely, absolutely. Noting also that the question of any sewage discharge or wastewater discharge in, where will it go?
Yes, and and also a question whether this will have any impact on the residents' electric or water bills. Some data to support that. That was a question that was asked, which the applicant can get it from the actual company.
I would also amend that the applicant should present evidence that the rates are not expected to increase. That evidence to be provided by the utility provider. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Support still stand?
I seek your support for the motion. Thank you.
We do have a motion by Commissioner Jar, supported by Commissioner Grant. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Township has contacts with DTE, so we can put you in touch with somebody at DTE who can provide a response.
No, I don't believe that was the question.
No, absolutely not. My intent with the motion was to request that the applicant should make an effort to go to the utility to request any supporting information that the utility may be able to provide. I understand that the applicant isn't the power provider. They don't set the rates. That's outside of their control. But they are a customer of the utility provider, and they clearly know about substations and availability of power. The, we would hope that the applicant would show evidence that they asked DTE that this will not put an undue burden on the existing infrastructure in terms of rate increases or equipment strain. The applicant's contention or the applicant's position is that DTE can provide the power. I believe the applicant, but I would like DTE to write a letter that says, we can provide the power at the current rates. That's, that's really what I was looking for, to allay the concerns of the public. I don't think I need to restate the motion. Does the applicant understand and do staff understand what I'm asking for?
Yes, crystal clear.
Okay, with that, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sherri Bud?
Yes.
Bernie Grant?
Yes.
Jackson Paul?
No.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Frank Cullen?
Yes. Motion carries. You have your preliminary site plan. Okay.
Two more.
Yeah, last two. Item number four, Planning Commission meeting schedule, overview by the Township staff. Is this Mrs. Edward, uh, Williams? I don't know why I've got that in my head. I have yet figured that out. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Or is it Director Akers?
Do you guys want me to go over it date by date? Does anybody have any questions they want me to answer? I can make note that for November and December, we did adjust the dates of the meetings so that we can avoid, hopefully, having prolonged meetings because we only have one each month due to the holidays. If there's any other clarifications or questions, you can let me know.
Is there, along the way, suppose in November, we get to the 4th, and we look ahead that there is one item that could possibly be on the 18th. Could we, at that point, cancel that meeting and push an item to a later date? Or the same thing goes for December as far as if it looks like the 16th or the 9th, we could wrap everything up to where the 16th wouldn't be necessary? Or we, we could cancel that meeting as well?
Yes.
Comments?
Ms. Chairman, is the number of November 18th and December 16th on the same day of the week?
All of them are on Wednesdays, yes. It's just moved to the Wednesday before.
There was the second and fourth Wednesday of every month.
Yes.
These ones would be the first and third Wednesday of November and December. Wait, because if we kept them on the second and fourth Wednesday, we would only have one meeting in November and one for December, as for the Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas holiday that we are on.
So it's moved to the first and third Wednesday?
Of November and December.
And, or could we cha- say in October, we get to the 28th, we're looking ahead, you're telling me that we don't have anything scheduled for the 4th, but it could come up. Could we move that date and then cancel the other one? Are we, I guess I should ask, are our dates fluid in those two months?
So part of the reason why, so this list is our scheduled meetings. So, you know, we have, all of our regular meetings are scheduled. They're typically scheduled on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. The reason why for November and December we listed, we changed them to the first and third Wednesdays of the month is partially because this year, we've had so many projects and so many applications and trying to cram everything into one meeting has made it, made it a little challenging. There, so of course, we could switch the dates back and just have one meeting and look to do special meetings, or, you know, what we could do is we could leave these meetings there, and then if activity is low at that time, we can cancel or maneuver, move. I hope I answered your question.
Sort of. I guess my concern is, is that we post that we meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays. Well, we get to November, and suddenly somebody in the public decides they, oh, they're meeting at.
They always meet on the second and fourth.
Second and fourth, and now we swap that date up. I know they're going to be published. I'm not concerned about that end of things. I'm just concerned about the public at that point being able, if they wanted to attend, making sure, oh, I got the second Wednesday. Could we look at it?
An applicant would be notified of the date anyway, right?
Well, I'm more worried about the public as far as applicant is concerned.
It's on the website. So I do, the question I have relative to the the two meetings in November, December is, when they're published dates, those are published, I don't know how to say, legal dates where you have to maintain those, such that if one applicant says, I want to hold it on that date, I demand it, but we want to move it, are we held to that date? No. We, so we can, we can move them off a date even though they may, hey, look, you have it scheduled. I want it on that date. So, so, oh, go ahead.
I mean, without, without knowing whether it's legally, I, I see Chairman, Chairman's concern over here because it is, it's established all these years that the Planning Commission meets on the second and fourth Wednesday. My only concern is, say we schedule it on the first, and a resident who's very interested in a project has always remembered it as being second and fourth Wednesdays and accidentally misses it because it was held on the first or third, would that place us in a position because it's always a set published date? Would, does that make a difference?
There's no, the, the way the Open Meetings Act is set up, there's not, it wouldn't put us like in a legal position or legal trouble because, because we, we've done this with other boards and commissions when there's been conflicts, like with a holiday, but they still want to have a meeting during that period of time. What we would do is they'd put an asterisk by the meetings and say, you know, there'd be a note at the bottom that says, move to first and third Wednesday due to holiday or something. So, so there's no, there's no reason why, you know, we, we couldn't do that. For, for the concern if somebody demands a certain meeting, technically, under Robert's rules, the meetings are called at the pleasure of the chairperson. So, I mean, there, there have been times where we've had conversations and, you know, we've, we've been asked to shuffle things around, and that's the purview of the board and commission to be able to manage that. So that's something that we, we can, we can do.
And in the bylaws, it does say, meetings may be rescheduled by a vote of the commission, or if necessary, special meetings may be called. So there's always something else we can do. And as soon as we know that we aren't having it, we, we always check the schedules that are always in the hallway, and that, those are always changed.
Also, December 9th is the second Wednesday, so that would technically not be a change. It would be November 4th, November 18th, and December 16th would be the change. Just a minor.
And December 16th is moving it up from the 4th.
Yes, December 9th would be the normal day. 16th is moving it up. You wouldn't be able to have it on November 11th. It's, it's Veterans Day.
Right, that's why we.
So, I see. As long as it's shown in the schedule that it's, no, this is not the, the normal date, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Comments?
I make a motion. We approve the submitted meeting dates of the Planning Commission.
Support, discussion? Could we, could we amend the paper to have the asterisks by the dates that are not on the second, 4th, please?
Such as this?
If you approve.
Vice support.
Super.
With that emotion, we don't need roll call. This can be a voice vote, I believe. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the schedule. The next and final item that we have to deal with is electing who is going to be the officers of our committee. So, of our commission. So with that, I open the floor. The first one is the chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Brian Cullen for chairperson.
I second that.
I will accept. Okay, for me as chairperson, God, I hate bringing myself up like this. For me as chairperson, for Brian Cullen as chairperson, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Elect a vice chairperson.
Jeff Jar.
Support or second, second.
Thank you. I appreciate the nomination, and I accept nomination. I'm happy to serve in the role as a vice chairperson.
Any other nominee? I guess I should have said that for the chairperson, too. I screw things up all the time, don't I? Find ways. Okay. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Jeff Jar as vice chair signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up is secretary.
To the chair, I make a motion that we elect Medina Atchison as the secretary.
I, I support, although she is in abstentia. Previous, in previous elections, she has indicated that she did like being the secretary, and she, I don't know what happened. I didn't get the message that, confirming that she wanted to do it again this year, but she has in the past. We've, we've nominated her in this meeting, and she has accepted it. I support the nomination.
Any other nominations? That being the case, all in favor for Medina Atchison to be secretary signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we need a primary liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I, I nominate yourself as the primary liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Since you're already working with the Board of Zoning Appeals and have done a fine job with it, I would support you as primary liaison.
I second that.
Unless, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other nominations, if anyone else would like to.
Anyone else wants to step up and go sit on the zoning board of appeals? Okay. I guess I am the primary. We need a second, do we need to vote on that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of Brian Cullen being the primary liaison to the zoning Board of Zoning Appeals signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We need a secondary, someone to. We need a secondary, someone to appear when and if I could not make it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I am the previous secondary liaison, or actually, I was the primary, I believe, in the last term. But I am unable to fulfill the time commitments of that role, and I'm not seeking a three-year reappointment to it from the Board of Trustees. Therefore, I'm not able to fill the role of secondary liaison to Board of Zoning Appeals. It has to be someone else.
Okay. Anybody step up?
I can't be.
She can't, she's on the town.
I can't because I'm on the township board, I can't do that. Yeah. How, would you like to say?
Mr. Chairman? Describe what the, the role is. Secondary liaison really only has to go to the meeting when the primary simply cannot be there.
Be there.
And it really is a backup, a backup role. They don't have to attend every meeting, they only need to be there in case of an absence from the primary, and your attendance record to the meeting has been exemplary this year.
Mr. Grant, would you accept the nomination if I make a nominate you to that position?
I would support it.
I'm sure he would.
Yes, I will.
It's a true public servant.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Grant to be the secondary liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals and a support. All in favor signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Okay, you're there. Don't worry, the BZA meets.
I trail you, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, to be clear, he isn't quite there.
Right.
He does have to be appointed to the role by the Board of Trustees at the next available opportunity, so he still has to pass, he still has to pass.
Pass muster.
Pass muster at the Board of Trustees level. Sorry, I didn't want to, didn't want to tell you you're there, you're not quite there yet.
Okay. Do we have any other announcements or statements or anything anybody wants to make before?
I have a few. But I'll go at the end.
Why not?
I'll be quick. So the next planning commission meeting is going to be January 14th, 2025, so just keep that on your calendars. There's also going to be a joint planning commission meeting on Thursday, January 29th, 2025, at 5:00 PM at the high school, so please just keep that in your calendar.
That's the big joint meeting, right? Not the little subcommittee?
That's the big joint meeting. Little subcommittee did meet on December 4th. We discussed kind of engagement, marketing efforts from the three different communities in the pro-, so we've decided we're going to start itemizing what those were to see, you know, where there's overlap and where we can support each other. So we're putting that information together between the three communities. Last announcement that I have is there's going to be an open house at Township Hall tomorrow at 6:00 PM for a proposed data center development by Panatoni Development on the 280 acre site near Hagerty Road 994, and that I would encourage anyone, residents, property owners, or community members who have questions about the development and wants to get answers from the different parties involved to attend the, the meeting. So the developer's going to be in attendance, DTE is going to be in attendance, and of course, the township representatives are going to be there as well. So we're, you know, here to, to answer questions and the developer is hosting the open house to answer residents' questions. There was one thing that I was asked to clarify, that, that there's a couple of questions that come up. So in October of 2024, a developer, Panatoni, came before the planning commission to preview a proposed layout for an industrial park on the site. At the time, the developer was having conversations with, with companies that were primarily looking at trucking and manufacturing type uses. So prior to the October meeting, they had held a few neighborhood meetings with residents who lived in the Hagerty subdivision where they previewed the site layout which showed that industrial park layout. So the current proposal that's, that the open house is about now is for a data center. It is a new proposal, which is why the developers have in the open house for it. So I just wanted to make that clarification that it is a different project than before. So that is tomorrow evening.
Hey, thank you.
Got a good question. Could, what's, could you give us a preview for the 14th, the January meeting?
We're going to have a public hearing on the residential district standards. We are, what else is on the 14th?
Park condos?
River Park condos maybe on the 14th. We got to have a conversation.
Car wash.
El Car Wash.
I don't, I believe they'll be the 28th.
Our, El Car Wash is going to be before him on the 28th. And then, of course, it's possible, it depends when site plans get submitted, but the, the Panatoni proposal may before, be before the planning commission in January, but we have not gotten resubmittals yet, so I'm not, that's not set in stone. Yes.
Sure, sure, sure.
Oh, there's a possibility of that as well, so just be aware of it.
Anybody with anything else? I have just two quick ones. I apologize to the public for not wishing all, and I hope all had, a happy Thanksgiving and a good holiday at that time, and for what's coming up in about 14 days, I believe, 15 days, wishing all a happy holidays to go forth. And with that in mind, I would entertain that inevitable lasting motion of...
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Aye, got it. There it was. Motion to support to adjourn the meeting, all in favor signify by aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.